Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday night, May 28, 2019, at 7:00 in the evening. This is one of our committee meetings that we have regularly on the second and fourth Monday, usually a Monday, Tuesday tonight because of the holiday. What we'll be having first, before we get to the Committee of the Whole, for which many of you I know are attending tonight, is a Transportation Committee. And so our Transportation Committee members are here, our Chair, Councilmember Kotzis, and then Councilmember McGee and Crowell. We'll get through those items as quickly as we can. We do have two presentations and a few other agenda items. And then I'll have some additional information before we start the Committee of the Whole meeting. Thank you.
President Nicely, thank you so much. I feel like the opening act for a group that nobody wants to see. But this is the Transportation Committee. We're going to try to move through these six bullet points as quickly as we can, but still get as much information out as we can and also allow time for questions. We do have two presentations this evening, both of them for street closures for this summer. The first one, Brandon Thompson for Brew Week. So Brandon, thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it. So this year for Brew Week, it'll be July 12 through Saturday, July 20. We're doing the same thing we did with Last Call. That'll be Saturday, July 20. So we're asking for suspension of the vending, noise ordinance, and then we're going to be closing Court Street from Washington to Carpenter and also West State Street from Congress to College Street. So we've always done that. We'll keep State Street open by Domino's so people can turn around through there.
Okay. And I apologize. Is that the last call?
That is Last Call. So that's the same as last year. So the times will be the same, hoping to close the street at 6:00 AM and then have the street open again at 1:00 AM.
Okay. Okay. And that is, I don't have my calendar in front of me, that is 7:20?
Correct.
And then in conversation here, just before we've got started, you also have First Call?
Yeah, so we're trying a new event this year. One of the things we've been finding with Brew Week is the second weekend is very popular. The first weekend doesn't bring in as many out-of-towners, so we thought if we create a larger event, we could help our sponsors. So this event will be happening on West State Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, July 13. We're hoping to close the street from 8:00 to 9:00 PM. We will keep the alley between Tony's and Hufaki's open, so even though that full street will be closed if it's granted, we like to keep that open so the businesses can still get in there, the residents can use that space. And this is a much smaller event. This is not like Last Call. We're expecting maybe nine or 10 beer vendors, whereas with Last Call, we usually see about 40.
Okay. And you said that's West State Street, so that is just one block? It doesn't sound like there's...
Correct, yeah. Right, basically in front of Tony's and Casa up to Southeast Ohio History Center.
Okay. Got it. And the intersections would...
Would remain open.
Would remain open, okay.
And we've asked for suspension of the noise ordinance. We're not sure if we'll have music. As this being a first-time event, we really just want to get people uptown, and then the event doesn't even have an end time. We're starting at 1:00. Once the beer's over, then people can go to other establishments. So it's not like Last Call, where we want to keep people on Court Street the whole day. Hopefully, in my estimation, maybe five or six will be finished. But with the street closure, we're going to keep it open until 9:00 to get all the vendors off and everything like that before we reopen it.
Okay. Overall, how's the health of the event? How's it been going?
It's great. It's hectic right now. I have a deadline for artwork on Friday, so it's a lot of communications. We have about 43 breweries I'm working with right now and then 30 establishments, so a lot of communications flowing in and out of Brew Week right now, but it's looking great. You know, last year was our largest, Last Call, so if you remember, Friday is our second-largest event, which is Brew Week. It rained, and I don't know if it was the fact that people couldn't use their tokens then, but everybody came to Last Call and sales were bigger than any other year. And costs haven't gone, excuse me, the price of beer hasn't gone up since we started. So it was just amazing to have that. You know, just people came out in droves at Last Call.
Okay, great. I'm going to open this up to questions for other committee members. Member McGee?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do. You put on a great show, and the city really appreciates it.
I appreciate it. I mean, it's not just me, but I mean, this is my fourth year doing it. This is the 14th year. It's a lot of fun. I mean, it's something we enjoy, and one of the nice things about last year is with our growth, we've been able to work with a lot of different groups. You know, I don't know if you noticed the flags, but we collaborated with Passion Works, which is something that's very important to us, and they made all those really artful flags, and that'll be on Court Street again this year. So that was a great collaboration. We also were able to donate to the pool in the Kitty area with the fencing and whatnot. So it's great that when you're spending money at Brew Week, it's also helping the community as well.
Thank you.
Great. Member Crowell, nothing? Mayor, please.
I'm glad you mentioned that. You know, the city's very appreciative to that donation to the city swimming pool that did come from Ohio Brew Week. Is there going to be an event on the parking garage rooftop?
There will be. I didn't know how much you wanted me to speak about, I didn't know, but just street closures. We are planning on doing the Top Deck Dinner again Wednesday of Brew Week. So that event was great. We're going to expand it. This past year, it was 84 people. We're going to go to 126 this year. So it's difficult just because of the space and getting things up there. It's a little difficult, but also with the food. But we plan on doing that again, so. Other signature events we'll have, the Brew Choo Choo, which will be in Nelsonville. That was the first Saturday of Brew Week last year. That'll actually be Friday since we're doing First Call, so. And then the other 200 events that go on that we don't actually schedule, so.
Good. Do we have any other questions or comments at this point? Any members? No? All right. All right, audience, no? Brandon, thank you so much for all the effort that you put into this and thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a blessing. I love it. So if anybody has a question too, OhioBrewWeek.com. If you have suggestions, I get them all the time on my phone through Facebook. Let us know. Some people wanted to bring back, I think there was a dog event that we used to do before my time. Trying to figure that out with Brew Week. We have our main events, but if any citizens want to do something, we're happy to promote that or connect with that. So just let us know. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving along in the same vein, we have Corey Fletcher, who is going to present for Boogie on the Bricks, which is, you know what? I forgot to ask you the dates. I know it's in maybe the second week of...
August 10.
August 10. All right. Great, thank you. And the floor is yours.
So we'll be requesting the street closure along similar lines for August 10, Court Street from Union, the Court Street-Union intersection to the State and Court Street intersection from 6:00 AM Saturday, August 10, to 1:00 AM Sunday, August 11. That'll give us enough time to set up and tear down and get everything out of there. If we can request the full State Street-Court Street intersection, that would be ideal because we had some serious issues getting the stage in and out of the alleyway. We had to task a city vehicle, I think it was one of the backhoes, to tow it down, and there were about three inches of clearance margin on either side of the stage towing it down that alley. So we can do it again, but it's a little tricky. I'll leave that up to the council's discretion. Also, I think having that intersection would also be more beneficial to like better crowd control and crowd flow. So again, I'm Corey Fletcher. I'm the new event coordinator for Boogie on the Bricks, taking over from Judy Weimer, who served for the last several years. Athens local, Athens resident, 10-3-6-0-682 state route.
And...
I know, backwards.
No, that's good.
Sorry, a little nervous. My first time in front of council. So like I said, vending, noise ordinance, suspension, and street closures. Boogie, as everybody knows, we've been an annual event since about 2004. The whole idea behind it is we were created to promote uptown businesses and kind of just throw a party in general for the town, by the town. In 2007, we established ourselves as a nonprofit in order to continue the mission to help sustain the event. We currently have three and about to have four individuals who serve on our board. I am the employee and an actor of the board. Admission is free. Everybody's always welcome to attend. We don't have any extra costs associated with our event. That's kind of, I think, our main draw, is we're the one big free party uptown, aside from Brew Week, of course, who is our awesome neighbor slash cousin that we used to be associated with. But it's better, I think, to have more events in Athens every summer, and we're working towards it. We're going to have two music stages. One will be down at the intersection of Court and Union. That'll be the acoustic stage, and that will shut down around 6:00 to 7:00 PM and then starting at noon that day. And then the main stage will go from noon to about 11-ish PM.
Okay. And if we can go back to the street closure, because it sounds like there was a request and then you asked for maybe just a little bit more of a closure, but ultimately, what are you looking for? It's Court Street? Is it from West Washington?
So we'd like to have, so basically, the Union at Court intersection, that intersection can stay open, but from that intersection all the way down through the intersection at Court and State.
At State, okay. I got it. So it's a two-block closure with traffic flow still being allowed at the Union intersection?
Correct.
But at the West State intersection, you would like that to have better shot at bringing in the stage?
Yeah, if possible. If not, we can work around that, but it makes logistics a little bit trickier and it takes us a lot longer to get in and out of there. So I know that some city employees were kept a little bit later than they would have liked last year because it took us a while to get the stage back down through and out the alley.
Okay. And I just have...
And we had to use a city backhoe in order to get it through there because the semi that can actually tow that stage in can't fit through the alleyway.
Okay. No, it makes sense.
But we can work around it.
Okay. You know, and I just have one point I did share with Corey right before council got started. I did field a call from Scott Winland, who is in charge of the AMAC event that is happening the following weekend, and he has some reservations about stacking two similar street events back-to-back. And so I did want to mention that. Scott was unable to attend tonight, but I think that we'll probably see him here, maybe on First Read. So, and Corey, I mean, if you want to add to...
And I have spoken to Scott. I understand his reservations, and I wish there were a way to space out everybody's events a little bit more, but as everyone around here knows, it's a very busy city calendar, and I think more events is better than less events. I don't think back-to-back street festivals is going to hurt Athens, especially I know his has a slightly different style than ours in the way that some of their stuff works. I'm not going to speak to the details because that's his area, but I know they kind of fit a different niche market than us, and so I think that more is better. And I think Athens can definitely support two back-to-back street festivals and music festivals. There's not a lot else to do during the summer, so everybody's going to come uptown and spend money and have a good time, I think.
Good, okay. And you know, and I'll tell you, I've been called a lot of things, but I've never been called a rock promoter, so I mean, I cannot really comment on it either, so.
And as I said to Scott, too, I'm more than happy to work with him if he wants to do any cross-event promotion or anything like that, like anything that can make both of our events succeed, I'm totally happy to work with him on it.
Okay. Great. I'm going to open this up to committee. Member Crowell, thank you.
Remind me of the street closure in past Boogie on the Bricks. Has it always been two blocks?
So it depends on which year. It's always been two blocks, but sometimes we've gotten that intersection at State and Court, and sometimes we haven't. It's dependent on the year. So last year, we didn't have it, but in previous years, we have had it, and it seems to work better in terms of event flow and crowd.
Okay, but it's always been two blocks, two full blocks?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Member McGee? You're good? Administration, Mayor, please.
You know, I appreciate your efforts in making this happen. We were all kind of sitting on our hands waiting to see if Boogie was going to continue on this year. I also appreciate the fact with what Brandon presented with the First Call, with this event, with the Last Call, and then with the Art Fest, that we are seeing the venues moving around in the uptown area, so it's not impacting the same places throughout the entire summer. But this is going to be an event, there'll be an event hopefully, on the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th, which, you know, is pretty much in the heart of the uptown doldrums when I know our uptown businesses certainly appreciate having more events to where more people are coming in as well. So I appreciate you, Corey, coming to us tonight.
And we very much appreciate the city working with all of us, and I think I can speak for all of my fellow event coordinators, like you guys have been awesome, and it's really cool to see more events coming into uptown Athens and turning this place into a really event destination during the summertime.
Oh yes, I'm sorry, Ron?
Just to include, Washington Street between the parking garage and Congress would be included in that closure area. And if the council grants State Street, it will close West State Street between Court and Congress. Allow for the stage there.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that additional clarification.
Yeah, thanks, Ron.
Okay. Do we have any other comments, questions? No? Any comments from the audience? All right. Corey, thank you so much for coming up tonight.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Third bullet point this evening is the Stimson Avenue Project, Ohio Public Works Commission Grant Application. Member McGee?
Thank you, Chairman Kotzis. The administration is asking for an ordinance, which we would have before us, I take it next Monday, which would basically authorize a grant application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Stimson Avenue Project. I mean, that's all we know as of this time if the administration wants to enlighten us any further.
Service safety director?
I got it. Thank you. The Stimson Avenue Project, as you're aware, has been under design here for the last about year and a half, and construction will take place next year. We've got one major grant through the Small Cities Program, and we have pinned on a little bit of additional funding through Safe Routes to Schools, are going to pin on a little bit additional funding through ODOT's Safety Program, and then this would be to pin on another $400,000 through the Ohio Public Works Commission Issue One Grant. Every year, almost every year, we apply for this. In most years when we apply, we're successful. Some years, projects aren't competitive. I will tell you, the Stimson Avenue Project, due to the nature of the roadway, is a highly competitive project, and we anticipate being funded with that $400,000 grant. It's competitive among communities across the state, but this is a competitive project. We're just asking now for the authorization to apply because an ordinance is required as part of the application, and we have to get that in during the time that this body is on recess. So that is really all I have on the Stimson Avenue Grant Application.
Are there any comments from any other councilmen, audience? I guess next?
The fourth bullet point this evening, the West Union Street Project Design and Engineering. So it sounds like we are moving closer in this direction. So Director Stone, do you have some points on this?
I do. I do. We need to get started on design with this project. So as you may remember, and over the last couple of years, we've talked about it in the infrastructure tour, as well as when we did the joint City Council/Ohio University Board of Trustees tour for the West Union Street area between, you know, basically the new H-Com construction site and the West Union Street Bridge over the Hocking River, a project in the out years. So we're looking at a 2022-2023 construction window for this project. And this project, we currently are funded by the Small Cities Program, same program that we're funded on Stimson, but just in a different subsequent year. That's kind of our first step for funding under construction. The next step we're going to make for funding under construction is for an ARC access road application. I do not believe we need legislation to make that ARC access road application. However, if we do, I'll come back to you, and I will ask for that. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, the mayor and I, with the Director of the Governor's Office of Appalachia, to promote elements of this project. The engineering now, just like all of our major transportation projects, the way they're funded is primarily for construction. You don't get external grant funding for design services. That's kind of the local community's skin in the game in order to get these large amounts of federal highway money to actually build the project. So our skin in the game will be with design, and right now, we're going to ask for an appropriation and authorization out of the 220 fund for $615,000. From a cash flow perspective, we will withhold encumbering that money until the end of the year because we don't anticipate it getting spent at this time, but our thinking is we need to get going and need to get under contract for design so that we can go through the project development process, the right-of-way process, the environmental clearance process, all of those things that happen as part of design. And I think now is the time to get that started so that we're ready to go come 2022, 2023, when we get into the construction window.
Okay. All right. Director Stone, thank you. Does anybody have any questions specifically? No? Okay. Other members? Nope. Members of the audience? Okay. This is straightforward. Okay, thank you so much. East State Street Fiber Optic Connection to Traffic Signals. I'll lean on you again, Director Stone.
I got it. All right. So we're going to ask you to authorize and appropriate $135,000 for new fiber optic lines for an interconnection of a variety of different facilities over adjacent to the East State Street signals. Now, what's unique about this particular work is this is going to connect our signal network there to, or it's going to get ourselves closer to connecting our signal network there to our wider city, our wider city network. And we have a quote from a vendor underneath the U.S. Communities Program, which is a program that this body authorized the city to participate with a few years ago, which is basically a joint purchasing agreement, and that's a nationwide agreement. What this does is this allows you, if people have submitted for services against this U.S. Communities Program, then you don't have to bid if it's greater than $50,000 because it's effectively already been bid by this joint purchasing contract. We find ourselves wanting to use these in unique applications, like in this case, the laying of fiber optic and interconnection of fiber optic lines, but that's an appropriate use of that U.S. Communities simply because there isn't a lot of competition locally for that kind of work. So we have a quote underneath that cooperative purchasing agreement for $135,000. We're asking you to transfer that money from the 593 Fund to the 220 Fund and then appropriate it in 220. So the 593 Fund is the East State Street TIF, which can only be used for improvements in the vicinity of East State Street. That was the TIF that went in place in 2003 with the improvements project that happened then that goes for 30 years. We used that for a great deal to meet the match for the major project that we're just wrapping up right now, and since it can only be spent in that area, this is exactly what it's supposed to be for, is paying for infrastructure in the vicinity of the TIF district. So we're going to ask for you to transfer that money from the 593 Fund to the 220 Fund and then appropriate it so that we can enter into this contract for this fiber.
Okay. I think I have just two technical questions. One is the job itself, is it laying conduit or is the conduit already exist?
Conduit's already there.
It's already there, so...
That was put in with the redesign of East State Street, which again fits nicely with what the city, the direction we would like to go in to where, one, we've got higher-speed connectivity between our signal boxes, but it also opens up a whole lot of options as we move forward, too. But this will be our first journey into having our own city-owned fiber.
Basically, we'll drop several current microwave links that were interconnected by microwave, and this will allow those to go away as we get the build-out of this network. It just so happens that this one is in the TIF district and is associated with the East State Street signals. I can kind of show you a map at some point to show you where we're on.
Okay. And then my second question is, because I remember, and just help me a little bit because I remember that our signals did not communicate with each other before this new project. Is that...
No, that's, the method of communication was by modem. There's a paired copper interconnect, and then there's a modem connection to the master controller. This, you know, gets rid of the paired copper interconnect and goes to a fiber interconnect, and then ultimately goes through an IP connection to, instead of, instead of over a modem, back to our city main controller. And now it'll go through, you know, the city network through it. The signals, it is, East State Street from Bob Evans to Walmart is a actuated coordinated system and was so back in 2003. It was updated in 2009 to try to make it work a little better, squeeze a little bit more capacity through the East State and 33 interchange, and then we just got over capacity with too many cars, and then it has been upgraded again with the new signals as part of this most recent project. So getting better, but you know, there's still only so many lanes, so.
And just to set the boundary, Bob Evans, you also mean including the new signal at Home Street?
At Home Street as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have any additional? Member McGee?
Just a quick question. I believe the mayor had mentioned months ago that with the fiber optic network, there would be a possibility of the public or perhaps businesses connecting with that. I take it that would not be in the works for this particular project, but it may be in the works for the future through the conduit and the same fiber optic?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, as we do all of these communications lines, interconnections of signals, and lay, whether it be conduit or the actual fiber into our arterios, our eventual goal is a build-out of that network that will allow for the city to enter into agreements to provide communication services for business development or other uses beyond just controlling of our own, an interconnection of our own city facilities and the city traffic signal. So it's kind of been policy for recent years to drop conduit in when we build something. We're excited about this because this is allowing us to actually go ahead and interconnect some of it for the first time. We're not to that point yet. Stimson Avenue, when we go to do that project next year, will be another leg. My goal ultimately will be to interconnect all of this so that we can get back to the heart of the city at the city building. This is all kind of new stuff for us, but we know that our microwave system in the city is getting some age on it, and this is in anticipation of eventually being able to replace that microwave system with a hard connection.
Member Crowell? You good? Okay. Administration, anything else to add?
No, we're excited about this project.
Good.
Finally.
All right, thank you. Any other additional comment? Anything from the audience? We do have, yes, please. And if you could just please step up to the podium and announce who you are and your address, and if you have any affiliation with any groups or...
No, my name is Sean Ellis, and I live at 130 Central Avenue. My question is, the East State Street Project, a seven months past completion date, contract date, is any of the money from the liquidated damages available to be put towards that?
I have just a point of rule. Are you asking about the fiber optic connection? Is that what you're asking about right now? If it's related to the fiber optic question under discussion, fine, but if it's another issue...
I know the East State Street is seven months past completion date, the contract date. There should be liquidated damages from that, from the company. I'm just wondering if any of that money can be put to this instead of having additional money, since the city should be getting money from it.
I understand your question, and I don't know that we have an answer tonight, but we appreciate the question that you posed. We probably won't be able to answer at this very moment about it, but thank you.
Is there any answer?
No answer right now. And that will be the format, too, for the rest of the evening. There may be questions that are raised that we can't immediately answer for you. They won't go disregarded because it's all recorded in our minutes, but we'll, but thank you.
Well, hi, good evening. I'm Julian Alas, I'm a township resident. A quick question. So the capacity that you gain with a fiber optic, is there any way to improve pedestrian safety or is just for traffic management? And you might not have an answer tonight, but I just wanted to raise that as an issue, maybe for the future.
Do you have any...
Anytime that, you know, we have a better connection, more redundant connection between between our, our traffic signals, you know, we have the ability to change it more quickly. If you have a specific location in mind, we can talk offline about what suggestions you would have to improve pedestrian safety in the East State Street area.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comment.
Okay. Anyone else? Great. Well, thank you. And here the final point tonight, this is the Richland Avenue pedestrian passageway project. So it is, it's back on the, on the agenda. And so what information do you have for us this evening? Thank you.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and hit this one too. Project 311 is one that has been long anticipated and we delayed it construction-wise one year because of inability to get bids that were awardable during the initial bid. Subsequently, we made some significant redesign effort on that project in order to see if we could get it built in a, in the amount of time that we had available, number one, and number two, for the money that we had available. And with generous cooperation by Ohio University to basically give us the access and I would say allow for, because, you know, it's the city's street, but, you know, we're working together as partners on this. That project will start construction as early as March 1st next year based on the, the rebid specifications. We had a bid last week. We had, we had good bids. And when I say good bids, we had an awardable bid. The low bid is 9% over the engineer's estimate of probable cost, and that allows us to, that allows us to award, we're allowed to award within 10% of that estimate. However, it is 9% over, so we're going to ask for an additional appropriation of $150,000 in order to go ahead and award this bid. And that'll cover the, a little bit of a construction beyond what you've already appropriated as well as the construction services, which is including testing and, and some contingency money in there. So I did get off the phone with Ohio University before this, this meeting, and we did ask for them to increase their contribution and they're supportive of the project. They can't commit it until after they go to their Board of Trustees meeting later in June, but, you know, basically about a third of that additional, since they're contributing about a third of the local match on that project, hopefully will be covered by them as well. This is a time-sensitive ordinance, and the reason for that is as long as we award it in this state fiscal year, we will still keep the federal highway money to do this. If we were to slip and not award it in the state fiscal year, we would run into a, potentially losing that major federal highway grant that is going to pay for the majority of the project. So the state fiscal year is up June 30th. ODOT has basically demanded us to get them the, the signed contract by, by the 10th. So, so we're, we're asking for this one to move quickly.
Noon on the 10th.
Yeah. That's what they said.
So suspension.
And this would be, again, if we go over that, then we'd be leaving roughly $1.8 million on the table, give or take, so.
We, yeah. Yeah. A little bit more than that.
So suspension on the first read?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. This is good news. I mean, the fact that we got good bids, it's going to be a tough project to build in the window that we gave them and, you know, so it doesn't disrupt the fall, basically. And so, so we're excited that we got good bids and, and we can move forward on this.
And the start time?
March 1.
March 1.
March 1 through September 11th, I believe, is the window. You know, the first bid, we were trying to compress it into as soon as, as graduation occurred and then commencement the following fall. And it, for a project like this, essentially building a bridge, it was just too compressed. And that's why we had an unsuccessful bid the first time. The other bid, there was two that came in, in this most recent bid opening. The second bid that we received was not acceptable. It was greater than 10%, significantly more than 10%, so.
Okay. Member McGee?
Since this seems to be my pet peeve project, I have three questions, which can be answered relatively quickly. The first question is how much does the city have in, at stake in this game? How much are we contributing overall? The second question would be, is it coming from the general funds at all? And then the third question would be, is anything being done to protect the OU students or the citizens during the interim between, say now and March 1st to deal with this same issue that seems to be the problem that, that we're spending so much money for?
So if I can speak to those in two, three, then one, if that's okay. So number two. What was number two? Now you have to ask me now. Sorry about that.
Let me go to the safety component. I'll just jump there. And this is certainly a conversation that I've had with President Dwayne Ellis in seeing if, if he could possibly have patrol officers down there, you know, because by and large it's the OU populace that cuts back and forth across that, so.
So it will be about $1.5 million in local money. Of that $1.5 million in local money, of 400, 500, yeah, about $500,000 we anticipate being Ohio University money. So to, to finish it up, a million bucks in city money, $500,000 in university money and, and a little over 1.8 million in federal highway money. That's total. And, you know, this is, I mean, just to kind of reiterate this project, I read a newspaper article from 1968 that complained about pedestrian vehicle conflict at this location, and this project once and for all will remove that pedestrian and vehicle conflict. So we're excited about this. This is several years in the making, and finally, we're going to get it delivered and.
Thank you.
Member Crowell?
Since this project has been on the books for some time, we have a new ordinance for e-scooters. Has that issue been taken into consideration with this project and how recommended routes might be for people on e-scooters between lower campus and the city or vice versa?
Do you mean during construction or after?
No, no, permanently.
No? It's not really come up?
It's certainly something we can explore. I mean, we've talked at length about what controls you can put on these e-scooters if they are deployed. The passageway itself can certainly be used, but, but one possibility, Councilmember Crowell, this is what you're getting at, is we could use a version of speed controls through the passageway itself. I mean, I have to, we'd have to really dig in deep with particular e-scooter companies to find out what the capabilities are, or we make it possibly a no-ride zone through the passageway. Okay.
I guess if the, if the problem, and this is kind of our tact on all the e-scooter things, if the problem comes up, I would recommend we, we, we address it at a time with, with legislation or policy, you know, based on what we see after construction is completed.
Thank you.
Can, can I just add? I mean, the sidewalks on either side are going to be university sidewalks, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other questions from committee? Nothing over here? Okay.
I have a general comment, Member Cottis. And that is that when you look at everything that was on your agenda, you know, one of the things I'd like to say is that there's, we've been very successful, and I have to give a lot of credit to Service Safety Director because a lot of this was done while he was serving as the Director for Engineering and Public Works, as well as our other engineers down at Engineering and Public Works of being able to obtain the amount of grant funding for all these projects or a large number of the projects that you see up there on, on your agenda. So the city's been successful.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other comment from the audience? We'll have Mr. Vogt first and then, Chris, you can be next. I'm sorry.
Just take my name?
Yes, please.
My name's Andrew Vogt. I own Athens Insurance on Richland Avenue. Regarding the passageway, is there going to be any sort of, I don't, some sort of encumbrance? So it's not a, right now, it's a pretty wide exchange of pedestrian traffic. I mean, we have that one little thing, but people walk, you know, from anywhere from the convo up to Porter Hall, and they'll just jump right in front of you. Is there going to be anything that is going to move that out of the way or direct them into this passageway?
In the design itself, we do have something that's not too dissimilar from what you see on Oxbo Bridge. Oxbo Bridge has basically a crash barrier wall, and then there's the decorative wall on the outer edge of the sidewalk, which pretty much creates a, a walkway to where people don't want to jump over and then into traffic, and they'll just take that all the way down. So there will be something very similar to that with this project as we move forward as well, as well as some decorative fencing, but the plan with the design is to channel pedestrians to the passageway, use the passageway, as well as, I believe it's still in the mix for a bus turnout or turned in, however you want to frame it, which will also create a barrier in a way of which you're channeling anyone getting off of our city buses because there's a stop that has a lot of riders that get off, either going to Baker Center or to West Green. And it will also help with the design to channel them to the underpass, the passageway.
Okay. Because it's kind of a free-for-all right now.
Yeah. A lot of brain power went into the design on this project, and I can get into the specifics with you and show you specifically where the barriers will go and how the sidewalks will get rerouted in order to, to, you know, create a, you know, that doesn't feel wrong as far as, it doesn't feel like a blockage. It'll, it'll naturally make people move through the area a lot better than it is today.
Okay.
I'd encourage you to look, in fact, you can go to the Engineering and Public Works website, and you can pull down the design there. I'd encourage anyone who's interested to take a look at that, and some of those specifics are identified in there. There's even some kind of simplified documents from the public meetings that, that, that would maybe be a little easier to read than the 250 pages of.
My concern from this is because of the northern part of the roundabout at 682, where the majority of the pedestrian traffic does cross that highway and with, you know, the north-facing black jackets during the dark times of night, it's just, it's a scary scenario. You do your best.
Sure is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Chris Monday, Garfield Avenue, Athens, Ohio. I have a question before my comment. Since the article in 1968, is there a record that you have on hand or know of of how many injuries or deaths have occurred at this crosswalk?
I don't have the specific numbers. I know that I've had injuries in recent years.
Thank you for posing the question.
There, well, okay. So for such a large project, which seems that it would likely be based on the idea of accidents and injuries, this is a very large product, project for a city that is raising the cost of living and also considering cutting costs in a place where it will affect the citizens. The project seems virtually useless to me and to many people that I've talked about. So expensive. People were taught to look both ways when they crossed the road from the time they were children. There could be a traffic light. It's, if, if we had our priorities straight and we had secure jobs and weren't feeling the need to raise the cost of living, a project like this would make sense. It would be a great thing. But here we are, raising the cost of living and cutting jobs, potentially, and that's all. It just seems like a useless project to me and to many people that I've talked to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And President Isley, with that, I am, I am done with the Transportation Committee.
Okay. We're ready for committee of the whole. While the council members are joining us, I just want to welcome everyone tonight and thank you for your patience in getting through our first agenda item and the presentations that we needed to make. This is discussion at the committee level, and tonight's council has under consideration for them the municipal and recycling, refuse and recycling contract. So I'll just spend a moment going over the agenda and how we'll handle, making sure that as many of you who want to speak tonight can. The order for tonight, Councilmember Crowell is going to offer a little bit of background information for us, and then City Administration will offer some brief comments. Mayor Patterson, I believe, Service Safety Director Stone will offer some, some other background information. And as is our usual format, after we've had that initial information presented, we give an opportunity for council members to respond, and they can ask questions or make a comment. In the interest of time, I'm going to be, try and be as equitable as I can for everybody. So as council members go through, if you have one comment and one question, I'd like you to restrict it to one question, please. And then we'll open it up for citizen comment. And we're asking tonight, since we do have such a full house, that when you're coming to the podium, well, several things. Number one, I will go in the signed-in order from which I've received names and addresses. I'll call your name. If you've decided not to speak, you can say, I'm deferring my time or letting somebody else go ahead. That's fine. You don't have to come up. When you do come up, for our records, and so for those of the audience who are watching on TV would know, we still ask you to present and give us your name and address and if you're representing a group. Our rules of council that govern our operations include a three-minute time limit for each person. So what we have up here is a, is a simple timer that I can sometimes operate. But what happens is, is it's got three minutes, and when I start it, you'll see, be able to see a green light from the podium. When it gets, when it gets down to one minute, that blinking green, the light starts blinking green. And then when it gets down to 30 seconds, the yellow timer comes on when it gets to the, you bet, you're at your three-minute time limit, then a buzzer does sound, and then we can reset it. So we're just asking folks if they would, you know, honor that three-minute time limit, that that will help. And we've also mentioned that we are at capacity. There are people waiting in the hallway. If after you've made your presentation, you're willing to give up your seat to let somebody else in so that they can make a comment, that will be helpful too. And with that, I think we'll start with Councilmember Crowell. Thank you.
Thank you, President Isley. I'm overjoyed to see the number of people in the audience tonight. Really proud of our community for stepping forward and being involved in this issue, all of the emails that I've received. I've been on council for 17 months, and this is the, by far, the most involved I've seen our community, and I, and I really appreciate all of you being here tonight. I want to be sure that we all understand what we are, why I think most of you are here and this topic that's on our agenda. So I want to give a little bit of background and make sure we're all aware of, of exactly what we are talking about. The Athens Hocking Recycling Centers has held the refuse, City of Athens Refuse and Recycling Services contract since July 1st, 2015. That contract ran until June 30th of 2018, and then they were extended one year, and that contract runs until June 30th of 2019. The City Administration approached City Council in, in February, I believe, regarding this contract coming up again, and a request for bid was written for recycling and refuse services for the city. And I want to read a little bit of, of that document so we all are on the same page. The, the section one in general information reads, "The City of Athens, Ohio invites responses for qualification for solid waste and recycling collection and processing services as described herein. The city will receive electronic, responses electronically via the protocol described in section 6.7. For purposes of this document, the term proposal has the same meaning as the term bid." Goes on to describe the method of award in section 1.3. "Awards for goods and services will be made to the respondents providing the lowest responsive and responsible detailed bid that effectively meets the city's operational and sustainability goals. The city reserves the right to reject any or all responses and is not bound to accept the lowest-cost response if that response is not in the best interests of the city. In making an award, factors such as the firm's service capability, integrity, facilities, equipment, reputation, and past performance will be weighed." The documents go on to give some background information on the City of Athens, and it does include, "As the city desires to become a zero-waste community, a sustainability-focused waste management plan is integral to the overall success of the city's commitment to reducing solid waste and increasing waste diversion. The city defines sustainability as the ability to meet the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. The core tenet of sustainability at the city is the concept of the triple bottom line of economic... of economy, environment, and social equity. The city is requiring that all future efforts associated with waste management processes successfully address the triple bottom line. Successful respondents to this bid will address how their program offerings positively impact each aspect of the triple bottom line and should include, at minimum, (1) economy, impact on local jobs, contributions to local community, and long-term investment in the region.[630.16][630.16](2) Environment, projected carbon footprint of waste management operations associated with services to the city and efforts taken to offset this footprint in support of the city's efforts toward carbon neutrality. This assessment should include miles driven per service day, type of fuel utilized, offsets associated with operations, landfill contributions, et cetera. The city may utilize the Carbon Map online calculator. Equity, it is imperative that the issue of regional environmental impact be addressed in any bid response. The successful respondent will supply information regarding downstream outlets and processing efforts engaged with each commodity collected and how that process impacts the region to which it is sent." This section goes on to discuss the university. The university and the city have separate contracts, but the City of Athens community extends well beyond the residential and franchise areas. Ohio University's Athens campus has over 22,000 students, plus 1,194 faculty members and 2,411 staff members. Ohio University manages a housing system of 42 residence halls that house nearly 8,000 students during the academic year. Additionally, the city is a driving force within the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District. Efforts to meet EPA-required recycling and waste reduction benchmarks, as well as other educational and operational goals. The successful respondent will address how, in partnership, their services may assist in providing waste-related, waste-reduction, and recycling opportunities throughout the city, the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District, the Greater City of Athens Community, and the Southeast Ohio Region. Now, I want to finish just with, under Section 3, the scope of work. This request for bid asks for the deliverables outlined in Section 3.1. The City of Athens is seeking a three-year agreement with a maximum of three optional one-year renewals. The agreement will be awarded to a qualified hauler who can support all hauling and manage processing of landfill tipping and single-stream recycling for the city residential areas, franchise district, and special events. So with that in mind, as I mentioned, the city came to address, to council, that this contract was coming up and it was time to begin working on it. The request for bids was issued in early April. I know that the Service Safety Director and Mr. Lucas were very busy answering questions about the bids for a few weeks in early April. The bids due in mid-April and the tentative award was set for the middle of May. So that's where we are today and I hope that we can have an informational and civil discussion today about people's feelings about this process. And I want to first, with President Isley's permission, turn to the city or should I turn it back to you?
That's fine.
The City Administration, would you like to address?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. You know, I have to say first and foremost that the Deputy Service Safety Director, as well as the Service Safety Director, put a lot of thought into the bid before the bid went out in trying to figure out the best and most fair process to go through, even to the point where, when the bids were open, we knew the numbers right away during the bid process to include any alternates that were included in the bid. And the three bids came in, first came in, one came in at $908,760. The second was $1,369,850. And the third came in at $1,685,434. Then there's the qualitative portion to this evaluation where, as all the things that you mentioned already, where a group of four sat down, also interviewed all three of the companies that had put forward bids, and then they individually evaluated each one of these contracts rather than talking amongst themselves, the four in, you know, on their own, sat there and did their own scoring, which again kept any compromise from happening where people are saying, "Well, I think this and I think that." I think that it was a great way to move forward with this. Let me share this as well, that, you know, one of my favorite quotes from one of my favorite people, hard things are hard. And we had meeting after meeting discussing these bids all the way up and through this morning. And with that, if you would like to hand out a memo to all of council, we looked through, you know, and we had to really kind of hone in, you know, on 735.05 contracts, material, and labor under ORC. So we were doing things correctly. And then as we got and started going through that and looking at the bids again, we're also looking at different things in Athens City Code. So with that, making sure that all things are fair and just as we move forward. City Service Safety Director Andy Stone has something. I also want to acknowledge all of those of you who are here tonight. I, too, am proud that you're here. I also want to acknowledge that I've received, I won't say hundreds, but an awful lot of emails, letters, and more than anything, personal one-on-one conversations, whether it was farmer's market or it was at the Memorial Day celebrations this past weekend. And that's fine. That's my job. I'm there to engage and to listen. So with that said, Service Safety Director Andy Stone is going to take it from here.
So the memo you have in front of you was prepared today and it outlines the administration's recommendations for municipal solid waste contract. And I'll go ahead and read it into the record. A brief review of recent history shows that up until the early 1990s, the city collected solid waste with its own employees and transported waste to a landfill. At that time, the administration and council decided to move collection activities from in-house to the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District, which is another political subdivision. This arrangement persisted for approximately 25 years with the two entities working jointly to increase the diversion of recyclables from the waste stream. A few years ago, the collection operation, the collection operation of the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District split off to form a nonprofit corporation, the Athens Hocking Recycling Center. As a result of this change, due to Ohio Revised Code 735.05, the city was required to competitively bid solid waste collection service for the first time in 2015, as Councilmember Crowell noted earlier. Athens Hocking Recycling Center won that bid to provide service through 2018. Last year, this body authorized an emergency one-year extension to that contract. The extension was at a higher rate than the bid amount. However, the city did not raise trash rates at that time. The goal of the extension was to allow time to conduct a thorough, formal, new bidding process in 2019. I sent you details of how we conducted that process in email correspondence last week, which you all received. Tonight, I'm announcing that the administration believes this bidding process has failed and we recommend that you do not allow us to award any of the bids. This recommendation stands in contrast to our position last week where we published an intent to award to Waste Away, the lowest bidder, pending council approval. Our change tonight is based on an extremely thorough review of all bids and the wider situation and our determination that all bids should be rejected for the following reasons. Number one, Waste Away, the company we initially determined to be the lowest and best bidder, submitted a company check for their bid guarantee. This does not comply with the bid instructions or with Ohio law. Ohio Revised Code 735.06 specifically states bids shall be accompanied by a sufficient bond or certified check, cashier's check, or money order on a solvent bank or savings and loan association. This language was mirrored in the request for bids. The purpose of this provision is to ensure bidders for public work are serious and have the means to undertake the endeavor. A non-certified company check does not meet that legal threshold. Furthermore, Waste Away is not a registered hauler under Athens City Code 5.02.06. Number two, Athens Hocking Recycling Center. The second bidder is not a registered hauler under Athens City Code 5.02.06. We are not certain why they are not registered since they have been under contract with the city for four years, but believe this is a remnant from when collection services were part of the solid waste district. Rumkey, this is number three, Rumkey, the third-place hauler, had a price far higher than the other two bidders and we do not believe it is economically feasible to accept their bid. With a rejection of all bids, we have come to a crucial point in that our current contract expires on June 30. At such time, solid waste collection will cease and we will rapidly descend into a public health emergency. In response, we ask you to complete the following legislative actions. Number one, there is not enough time to rebid. So we request that in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 735.051, that you declare a real and present emergency and obviate the bidding procedure and authorize me to negotiate an extension to the current AHRC contract for up to one year and make the necessary expenditures. This will allow us to update the request for bids, adjusting the evaluation criteria as appropriate, and rebid the work. The City Administration asks for as many council members as are interested to providing input during this rebidding process. My goal will be to rebid in six months, but a year will allow us enough time on the back end to adjust as needed. Number two, as you are aware, and I talked about in February, the surplus in the garbage fund has been decreasing over the last year due to paying the higher prices established by the 2018 extension without raising solid waste rates to the customers. We request you review and increase solid waste rates accordingly to maintain even expenditures versus revenue in this fund. Number three, lastly, we ask that you review and modify Athens City Code 5.02.08-A and B to remove the limit on the number of haulers and decrease the annual license fee. As currently written, the law would not even allow Athens Hocking Recycling Center or Waste Away to get a license since they have not had one before. Delivering essential services to a city is complicated. Municipal solid waste is no exception. My staff worked extremely hard over the last five months to create and conduct a competitive bidding process that meets both qualitative goals of the city and provides the best value to the citizens. But Ohio Revised Code 735.02 and Athens City Code 5.02 are clear. They both charge me, the Service Safety Director, with the duty to manage solid waste for the city. The responsibility for the failure of this bid process is mine alone and I will own this problem. I ask that you act on these recommendations from the administration and I commit to redouble our efforts in the coming months to arrive at the highest quality and best value solid waste contract for the citizens of Athens.
That being said, I certainly recognize that a lot of you came with a lot of things to say, so please don't hold back. You, you know, I encourage you to still go to the podium and say what you've come here to say. But again, we believe, I believe truly, that this is the best path forward as we look at this.
Okay, so next steps. Never a dull moment here. Thank you for that information and thank you for all your careful and hard work. It's not, it's not been an easy process and I appreciate all your work. What we'll do is same kind of format that I outlined earlier. We'll give council members an opportunity to make one comment or ask a question. We're not voting tonight, so this is just committee hearing and discussion. And we won't necessarily be able to answer all the questions that even some of the council members might pose, but at least gives us that opportunity and council and administration can always get back to us. So I'll open it up for the floor for council members to ask questions or comment, have comments. Does anybody want to start? Councilmember Grace?
First of all, City Administration, thank you so much for all your work and thank you to everyone who came. As Member Crowell mentioned, this has certainly been a very active week of participation in, in public government, in local government, and it's really wonderful to see the engagement and how the process can work. And so I appreciate the emails, the participation, Facebook messages, everything. And, and I appreciate the option and recommendation from administration. I concur, we need to evaluate the bid process. I felt that there were some, just some, some questions that, that I was unable to answer from reviewing the bids and, and some things just didn't make sense and I think we need to evaluate and, and really have some open conversations with, with residents of the city. It's easy to all say that we value local, that we value shopping local and, but we also have to be willing to pay for it. And, and that's, that's true with, with services and, and local businesses. And I, I think it needs to be a very frank conversation that if, if we really want to hold to supporting good-paying jobs and, and sustainable efforts, we have to, we have to be willing to pay to, to meet those ideals. And so, and that, that isn't a decision only for those of us sitting up here. That's, that's something that, that all of the constituents here in the city, we, we want to hear from you and hear what your values are in terms of this process going forward. So that's, my, my question is really to the public, is if, if you, if you believe in, in increasing sustainability efforts and, and supporting the high, good-paying local jobs with benefits and, and what you value in terms of services, please, please communicate with us and let us know that.
Okay. Councilmember Key?
I, too, would like to thank you all for turning out. I've never seen such a great example of democracy in action. Our emails have been somewhat swamped by your comments. That being said, I really want to emphasize something that, you know, we've taken to heart your stories about job losses and possible impacts on your futures and your families and everything. And I'm sure that 20 of you, 30 of you, 50 of you could get up here and tell us stories about that, but we know it. We truly know it and, and we, we feel that. But there are so many other factors that need to be considered in this determination. One of the factors that I've been concerned with, and I'm kind of the cheapskate of the council, as some of you know, is the fact that, you know, this, this bidding process as we see now may result in no increase or it may result in an increase. If we're talking about $7 or $14 per month more for somebody who's a very low-income person, minimum wage person, or a fixed-income person, that adds up to a lot over a year. In addition, we've raised water rates and the school board, as you know, has raised substantially the rates for people. So I hear on a regular basis how people are being priced out of Athens. Family members who have lived in Athens or want to live in Athens are feeling that pinch. So I've taken that into account as well. And when it comes to the time of the questions, my questions for, well, for all of the haulers is why are your rates the current or the proposed rates for the Athens Hocking Recycle Center? I would especially ask at some point in time, why has this jumped so much? And I realize so much of it is out of your control because you're dealing with a subject that is taking a beating internationally. So I realize that. But however, I owe it to all the citizens of Athens and I owe it to those people who are going to be paying those rates to ask that question. So again, thank you for turning out. Thank you for your comments. I assure you, I've read every one of them. So thank you.
President. President Isley, thank you. You know, the buildup leading, leading up to this, because I've been on council a little bit longer than Member Crowell, but not as long as, as a lot of people that are up here. And, you know, if you have a contentious issue, you might get a half dozen letters, you know, and that, and that really, that's, that really does, you know, that sends off the alarms because you're like, okay, these, you know, there's some people that really you know, there's some people that really care about this. I was over 40 emails, I think, by the time I came in here tonight, so I've never seen anything like this, and it didn't feel the same as some of the other discussions that I participated in. So I do want to thank the public for coming forward, you know, and providing those stories about going above and beyond, how Athens Hocking Recycling Center goes above and beyond in those pinch situations, whether it's Halloween or student move-out, or, you know, or all those other times that our city is a little bit different during a certain weekend. So, you know, I never realized that people loved their hauler so much. So, thank you. And I do have one question for administration. So the path forward on looking at discussing redefining this process, do we have an idea of what this looks like yet, or is this something we'll just start to shape as the summer goes on?
Well, I'd like to, I mean, I can speak to that. I'd like to, as I mentioned, I'd like to get this out again in six months. So, you know, you all have our evaluation criteria, and clearly there's concern about the way we set it up. So I would ask you, over the coming six months, please provide us suggestions as to the direction you ought to go. I mean, we have a responsibility to build some sort of process that allows for competition and to communicate to prospective bidders as to what they're expected to submit on. So if you want to put that mark on your calendar and then back to plan and look at it closely and send your recommendations to myself and Ron, we will ensure that we take it all into consideration as we update the request for bids.
Other comments? Councilmember Paul?
I appreciate everybody who's emailed and talked to me and phoned. I'd like, when looking and evaluating these sort of processes, I'd like to look at it between three different, like, legs of a stool. The city is like the seat of the stool, and we have legs underneath us. And those legs are the sustainability that we all desire and work towards, the resiliency that we're going to be able to go forward, especially with climate change, and the idea that we need to reduce our carbon footprint and make our systems as resilient as possible, and community, and how we make decisions, and how we value those different other two legs of that stool. And without any of those three, nothing really happens. We collapse. And I think that when I was looking at the evaluation system and such, that we need to look at the balancing and the weight of the different scores, and that would be one of my recommendations going forward. Because at the very end, there's a lot of really good questions and requirements for the bid, but at the very end, it's like, well, whoever does the cheapest amount gets a super amount of points. And that means that you are going to that bottom line again, not the triple bottom line that you talked about, but the bottom line. And I think that we need to especially look at that, and I'm more than happy to work with you, to look at these other waitings and see if we have to ask it in a different way, put more community-oriented questions out there and those sort of things, so that it is truly the triple bottom line, and that resilience, community, and sustainability are the things that we are spending our money on. Because this is like another big giant project that we've been doing in our community where they're like, well, we don't want to spend the money upfront to save money over 50 years. And that's not acceptable in my mind right now, and I very much appreciate that you came forward to tell us not to take any of the bids. But we need to walk the walk when it comes to sustainability and resilience. And this is a big amount of money, and the city and the surrounding areas have to walk the walk of sustainability and have to walk the walk of the fact that climate change is real and that we need to have resilience, and that it may cost more, like Member Grace has been saying, but we may have unrealistic amount of money that we're spending now. We didn't increase the money for when we did the new extension, the year extension. Maybe that was one of the reasons why it was so much higher and that we're losing revenue. So I think that we, as a community, need to support and push forward the resilience and the sustainability in the waiting and in how we write the weights and how we do the last part of the 50% bonus that you get for the lowest bid. Thank you.
If I can speak to that briefly, you know, I mean, we're, that's something, you know, bidding a solid waste service and creating an evaluation structure is not something you do every day, you know, and every community is unique as to what they anticipate. You know, we felt going into this that we had to establish some sort of structure by which that it was, that price was an option, that was something to be considered. And the basis for that was the fact that a year ago, Athens Hocking Recycling Center came to us and said, we can't extend the contract at our bid price from three years ago, we have to increase it by $300,000 a year. And we went to you at that time, so they're increasing it by $300,000 a year, that's how we're going to have to go. So we knew that the pressure was going to be there. Additionally, in 2015, the second bidder was $3 million higher than the lowest bidder. So we knew there was a lot of money that Athens Hocking Recycling Center left on the table in 2015, and so that we didn't have to double or triple trash rates when the bids came in. We thought there had to be some sort of evaluation criteria applied to price. And not, now, how much, whether it's one-half or one-third, is something I think to debate going forward here, but that was the why. But, you know, it certainly wasn't, you know, the lowest or nothing, you know, as far as our approach.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Carl?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Stone, and also what Member McGee was talking about, all the prices of living in Athens going up, and that was on my mind as well. But I kept coming back to the way this community values sustainability over other communities that I've lived in and other communities that I read about. And for me, the stool, the three-legged stool, is people plan it and profit. People plan it and prosperity, economic prosperity, and those are equally weighted. There is, none of those three are any more important than the other. So I think that's something that we need to look at in the next bidding process, is making those three considerations on an equal level. And then I think we also need to think about the partnerships that have developed in the city. As I mentioned, Ohio University has a separate contract, but they are obviously a huge part of our city, and the city administration and the Ohio University administration are partners in many ways. This board and the Ohio University Foundation, Ohio University Administration are partners in many ways. And then there are local partners that all work together on certain aspects of these services in our city. And when I thought about the aim of the process to award the bid to the lowest and best bidder, it was what does that best bidder really mean? And to me, it means what is best for the city of Athens. And the economics are a big piece of that, and they're certainly very, very important. But I think in this community, they're no more important than our considerations for the environment or our considerations for people. So I'd be happy to work with you on the next process. Thank you.
Councilmember Reiser?
Thank you, Madam President. My comment or question has to do more with the procedure for next week. What does the administration intend to present to council so the council can then act one way or the other?
I would refer you to the back page of the memo that I just passed out. You know, number one of that back page absolutely has to occur before council goes out of session. My preference would be that you acted on number two and number three, so three different pieces of legislation about this. We could conceivably, were you to take it up right away after you came back from break, act on two and three, but my preference would be that you acted on all three of those, but at a minimum, item number one.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Isley. I want to say thank you to the administration for doing your due diligence. I can tell that this was a lot of work. Thank you to the citizens of Athens who reached out to us to communicate. Thank you for your presence this evening. It's a big F-ing deal. It is. I will leave it at that. I've had the opportunity to serve the city of Athens for almost 12 years here, so I don't need to say a whole lot more, and I'm thankful.
I have the sign-in sheets, and we have about 50 people who would like to speak. I know some of you may have changed your mind and decided not to be, but you just want to stay and support, and that's fine. So if when I call your name, you want to defer your time and just say someone else can speak, I'll go on to the next person on the list. As I explained, I will set the timer, and if you'll give us your name, address, and if you represent an organization, and we welcome your comments. The first one is Sue, Riggy?
I want to speak.
No, you need to come over to the podium so we can, that's the only way it will get livestreamed, so thank you.
Thank you very much for welcoming us all to the committee and letting us speak. And even given the information that this bid process is not going to go forward as we planned, I think it's still important that a lot of us get a chance to talk. So I'm here recommending a moray, and I figure visual aids are always helpful. So I've been the volunteer coordinator for the last four or five years for Student Move-Out, which is a huge deal in Athens. And I was shocked when I looked at the score sheet, and I'm guessing that ability to support special events was the rubric under which Move-Out falls. And, you know, I don't know how AHRC couldn't have scored higher than it did by person number two. So at our group meetings for the last three years at least, I have heard nothing but praise from the solid waste folks in the city for the job that AHRC does. These guys make multiple runs. The city is really pretty spotless, you know, come morning time when they've finished. And the city really needs, the council really needs to take that into account. Why the scoring system listed 50% based simply on price? I mean, it's almost impossible to then beat that on the other parameters that were looked at. So my first point was about a moray and move-out. You know, my experience in this town and hearing from the solid waste people in the city is that AHRC has done a stellar job. I also pick up trash in the county. Neighbors and I have worked with Doug Kreitz from the sheriff's office. He's given us little vests to wear, he's given us bags, and the county townships rely on AHRC for recycling. There's already a whole bunch of recycling on the side of the road if those township pickups go by the wayside, because I don't have any information on what I was given as to how the other companies are going to handle. Well, for your contract, they wouldn't handle it, but AHRC is dependent on that, so I don't know what the county is going to do for the services that AHRC currently handles if they go under.
Sue, your time is about up here. Thank you.
And then I'm also, is that the red light? Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mark Snyder?
President Isley, Mayor Patterson, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Mark Snyder. I live at 44 Elmwood Place here in Athens. And I want to speak on behalf of the solid waste contact, and specifically, I'm here in my role as Chair of the Board of Directors of Rural Action. Debbie Phillips, our CEO and former council member of this council, and also a former state rep, will also deliver part of this talk, and we want to cover some of the points that were not covered in the emails that were sent to you over the weekend. You know, our nation and our founders and its wisdom created a government that has a separation of powers, and this allows the opportunity to have deliberation on important matters as we're seeing here tonight. That's a great thing. But I'd like to start by providing some context regarding the involvement of Rural Action. The mission of Rural Action is to build a more just economy by developing the region's assets in environmentally, socially, and economically sustainable ways, our triple bottom line. One key way that we work is through partnerships that help to develop infrastructure that can scale up the work for greater impact. We're concerned about the possible loss of this infrastructure if the city proceeds with the proposals as were given a week ago, and thank you for your action of continuing on with the current contract. The Athens Hocking Recycling Center is committed to creating jobs and economic opportunities locally while reducing waste, conserving energy and resources, and protecting public health and the environment. The executive director, Bruce Underwood, and his staff are regularly praised by the Athens residents, businesses, and visitors, as has been commented on already this evening. In fact, at a recent Athens Uptown Business Association meeting, several uptown businesses and property owners were extremely impressed and complimentary on the quick turnaround and professionalism that the staff had during the recent OU move-out week. Thank you, Bruce. The success of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center is rooted in our community and provides reliable service, a positive customer experience. Yes, some of us do love our solid waste haulers. And unparalleled education in sustainability, recycling, and composting. We're concerned about what will happen to the good local jobs at the recycling center. AHRC currently employs 32 union employees and five non-union employees, many of whom are here tonight. Thanks for being here. And they receive a living wage and health benefits. Jobs like these are rare in our part of the state. The staff would shrink with the loss of their largest client.
Your red light's on. Your red light's on. Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging that.
Thanks. Debbie Phillips, I live on Baker Road out in the county. It's great to be back here in the council chambers. The implications of this potential loss are far-reaching. Nearly all of the employees of AHRC reside in Athens County, contributing to our local tax base, spending their money at our local farmer's market and grocery stores, taking lunch breaks at our local restaurants, and supporting local shops. The bottom line is that patronizing businesses in Athens County keeps jobs, taxes, and loyal people in Athens County. Over the past nine years, Rural Action, together with the city of Athens, the Sugarbush Foundation, Athens Hocking Solid Waste District, local businesses, Athens Hocking Recycling Center, and many local citizens, have made significant progress in the area of solid waste management. Athens and Hocking counties have increased recycling rates from 8.9% in 2009 to 24.7% in 2017. The city of Athens Sustainability Plan calls for 90% of recyclable materials generated within the city to be diverted from the landfill. In a time when collapsing markets for some of the materials are setting other communities back, we have continued to make progress. This is possible because there is a strong network of committed partners. Core infrastructure is essential to continue this progress, and we believe that infrastructure is in jeopardy if the city of Athens' contract with AHRC lapses. The city of Athens and local businesses and institutions in the region are making this progress in large part because of AHRC and the materials reclamation facility. The Merck allows us to manage single-stream recycling and drive up diversion rates. AHRC also manages an organics collection and composting facility and is exploring the possibility of an anaerobic digester, which could help to address the city's need for disposal of bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant. The city's pilot composting program will be included in the 2018 data. To date, it has collected more than 24 tons of material. While compost collection was a supplemental bid, the other bids did not include this service option. The city of Rural Action and the Athens Hocking Recycling Center have been working together on this pilot project. We believe this program is beneficial, and if council decides to proceed with a larger-scale program, the infrastructure and capacity to manage it will be necessary. We're concerned about the potential loss of millions of dollars of investment made in this region toward our recycling goals. Rural Action and other partners have leveraged over $1.5 million to grow a zero-waste economy. We have developed a local social enterprise, Zero Waste Event Productions, LLC, which is creating jobs and educating hundreds of thousands of people each year as they work to reduce waste from festivals and events. They have just brought on three new workers and have contracts to zero-waste festivals in seven states this year. Much of the material they divert from the landfill is taken to AHRC. We need this infrastructure in our region in order to create jobs, reduce landfill waste, and strengthen our community. The benefits of having a mission-driven partner that helps the city, the county, the solid waste district, business owners and residents be more successful in our share goals of sustainability and quality local jobs are at least as important as cost considerations. You, members of council, have You, members of council, have the power of the purse, and you are the individuals who get to make the decision. I urge you to take the administration up on their proposal and work with them on new bid criteria.
I live at 15600 Henry Road in Amesville, and I am the Office Assistant at Athens Hocking Recycling and Refuse. There's been a lot of talk about Athens Hocking Recycling as a partner. And I've heard a lot of feedback from people saying, "You're not really going to go under. You're grant-funded. You have all these other contracts." And so I want everybody to have a little sneak peek of what it was like in the office on Tuesday morning. So Monday, we get this letter from the city that makes it sound like a done deal. I am told on Monday that we didn't get the contract, and I now know. And I go home to my partner, who I provide health insurance for both of us. And it's my first stable job that I've had since moving back 11 years ago that I'm going to be losing my job, probably by the end of June. I go in Tuesday morning, and the supervisory staff are having a meeting that is focused on which trucks we're going to be selling first or returning first, because we lease a lot of them, and which staff are going to be laid off in the first round of layoffs. It is at that moment that I panic, and I post to social media that we have lost the contact on my personal Facebook page. We would have had no idea that council even had a say in this, and it wouldn't have fought for our jobs had I not done that because a community member was like, "Hey, wait a second. That's not how council works." So that is the only reason that we're even here. That said, I helped work on the contract. And some things that you might not know about us, we are not polished, right? We are numbers people, statistics people, and accountants who did this work. There were weeks of preparation where everything stopped, where we sped up our financial forecasting process, which we are really gifted to be able to do because we have an accountant that is on our board right now and has been phenomenal. So we were spending all of our time looking at exactly how much money it was going to take to run the City of Athens contract so we could do the lowest possible bid that we could. The night before the contract was due, I got a call from Waste Away asking what our tipping fees were. I honestly answered, "I don't know." I was there, I'm there an hour after everybody else has gone home, and it was in that hour that I got the call. And I said, "Unfortunately, I don't have that information, and everybody else who could give it to you has gone home." I also know that they have...
Can you close with one sentence? I know you're concerned, and you conveyed to council, and council has responded to you, and we appreciate your being here tonight, but we have 50 other people.
So the thing I would say is that I have no idea how Waste Away scored so high. Their contract reads like a marketing 101, "Tell Your Story," and has no detailed information.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate you being here.
I'm Kylie Boss, and I live also on Baker Road out in the county, but I'm here representing the Sugar Bush Foundation, which is a supporting organization of the Ohio University Foundation. We fund collaborations between the university and the community to improve the quality of life and environment in Appalachia, Ohio. And I want to provide some of the bigger picture and background that can help to consider the context in which this bid ought to fall. When you're scoring, somehow you need to be able to take into account the bigger picture of a wider initiative that is built on local dollars, regional partnerships, and responsiveness to local needs and goals. In 2010, Ohio University's Sugar Bush Foundation approached the Voynovich School and Rural Action and asked them if they would collaborate on a comprehensive effort to improve our region's ability to recycle. And they formed the Appalachia, Ohio Zero Waste Initiative. At the time, as Debbie said, we were at 8.9%. That was the third lowest recycling rate in the state. To assess the needs in our region, the Sugar Bush Foundation funded a comprehensive feasibility study regarding waste, asking our local people what their needs and goals were. One of the strongest recommendations that came out of the ambitious 90-step Zero Waste Action Plan that came out of the feasibility study was for the Athens Hocking Recycling Center to build their Materials Recovery Facility, the MRF, which they did with much partnership and local responsiveness. As a result, we're now able to divert 25% of our waste from the landfill, and we're one of the lowest waste generators in the state, and we're a model to look to in the state and even nation for how a community can come together to assess its own needs and meet its own goals. Over the last 10 years, Ohio University, through the Sugar Bush Foundation, has proudly invested $1.3 million into the Zero Waste Initiative. The Zero Waste Initiative has become our flagship example of how university-community collaboration can create regional systems-level transformation. And the Athens Hocking Recycling Center is its anchor business. The services that the AHRC provides were designed specifically to help the City of Athens and Ohio University achieve their sustainability goals.
Ms. Boss.
I'll just finish my sentence.
That sentence, that would be great. Thank you.
The best value for our community is to continue to build on the initiative that was built with local dollars, regional partnerships, and responsiveness to local needs and goals.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Ted Linskey. I live in Athens Township, just outside of the city, lifelong resident. And I wear a lot of hats in my life. I do a lot of different things, involve a lot of different groups. But one of the things I'm always going to default stance back on is the human aspect of things. How does it affect a person that gets out of bed every morning, puts their work boots on, and goes to work? How is this decision going to affect them? Councilperson Fall, I appreciate your comments. Mr. Crowell, as well as Mr. McGee. You guys all talked about the human aspect of this. It's so important. And we talked about the three-legged stool, about how we're going to put this package together, how we're going to fairly assess these bids. And I urge you, and first of all, thank you for doing the action you did tonight. As far as I'm concerned, it was exactly the absolute right thing to do. But it is very important for us going forward to put emphasis on how is this going to affect people, people that work for a living, and people that get up every day and just try to go about their merry ways and do their jobs. And that is so important to... So put into that bid criteria what their rate of pay is. Ask that question. You have that right to ask. Ask, "Do you provide health insurance to your people?" What kind of health insurance is it? Is it good health insurance, or is it just one of these lousy pieces of things running around out there we all knows out there? So it's so important. And you heard that young lady talk about how important it was for her to have her health insurance and for her partner. And that's exactly what I'm talking about. So, thank you.
Good evening, councilor, council members, and city administration. And thank you to all of you who showed up here to share your support for what the recycling center does. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. My name is Bruce Underwood. I'm the Director at Athens Hocking Recycling. And on behalf of all of the employees and the AHRC Board of Directors, I really ask that council fully discuss all the details and really with a fine-tooth comb, look at all the implications and downstream ripple effects that AHRC has in the community. I hope that after your analysis, you will continue with the city's extension, but really examine all these different factors. AHRC's Materials Recovery Facility, as in many ways, was built to serve the City of Athens. It was built to serve the university and the solid waste district. AHRC very much depends on these combined service contracts at that scale with all of those partners to make it work at that scale and operate as it does. Furthermore, AHRC's bid of the three bids that we, the one we provided, is based off of many, many years of experience of people sitting in this room and supervisory staff who have worked with the City of Athens, the city officials, and council members, and community members, and businesses, and residences throughout the city. We know what we're doing, and we've done it for many years. A complex service contract in the City of Athens with unique geography, types of housing, demanding periods of service such as move-out, all these factors come in to AHRC building a whole real cost, not rates for special events, and reflects the actual amount of work that goes into providing the service on a day-to-day basis, 364 days a year. You know, we talked about raising the rates. I think, I guess one of my questions to council is, when is the last time that rates have been raised? When has that been looked at? Of the 4,002 addresses provided by the city, 500 of those are commercial and mixed use. So I feel like all the information wasn't really accurate to begin with. Of those 500 and some accounts that commercial and mixed use, over all of those have five or more 35-gallon trash carts per week. That was certainly something that was not detailed in the bid, and only obviously AHRC has realized because of our service over the years. Was the fact that AHRC has also many customers in the City of Athens, including the university, and we would have to travel the same streets and potentially increase the road miles traveled in the city to provide the same service if AHRC was not chosen for the city contract. What are the ripple effects in the community and the solid waste district? We need to really fully consider that. In closing, I hope that after your analysis, you really take the recommendation from the city, whatever it be in the future after this extension, and really consider the fine details of the contract and how it affects the community beyond the city corporation limit to include the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District and citizens that receive service from us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, council, for considering this matter so carefully, that is of so much importance to the community. And thank you very much, city administration, for all of your hard work. I'm here speaking as a board member of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center and as an at-large city council candidate as well. I know really good things have already been said about these guys in the bright shirts and the other employees of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center, but I just wondered if I could please share my experience that when I became a board member, they let me ride around on one of the recycling trucks with them. And these guys are incredible. I think a lot of people are at worker school during their routes, so you see the results, and you know those are excellent. But these guys have run between houses. They know their way around the city so amazingly well. It's like the back of their hands. They know which shortcuts to take and which people put their bins in a certain strange spot, and they make sure to get them. And, I mean, you could talk to these guys, they could probably each talk to you for three hours about all the little quirks that they know that somebody from outside the city wouldn't know. And I think the learning curb on trying to learn, all those little details, would take a long time. And that no matter how good a company was, service would suffer for all the people that have the little quirky things that the guys in the bright shirts already know. So that's really good. Krista, I thought, spoke really movingly, the administrative assistant of the center. But just to put what she said in a little more context. So after we got the results last week, the accountant that was referred to, Jim, are you still in the room? Yeah, there's Jim. Jim has been a godsend to our board. Jim is a very experienced accountant. He and Executive Director Bruce Underwood sat down for seven hours and ran the numbers. And without the city contract, things are grim. I won't go into all the details, but they were talking about some really, really painful cuts, selling trucks that we need, and lowering salaries, and maybe getting rid of benefits, and laying people off. And even with all of the really serious cuts they were talking about, ones that we wouldn't want to make, there is no scenario that they ran in which the AHRC could remain open past June of 2020 without the city contract. And many scenarios in which it would close sooner than that. So I just want people to know that this is not hyperbole. This is real. These are real numbers. The city contract is essential to the continued viability of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center. And as has been said, I think that, you know, really well-paying jobs that are union jobs and provide full benefits are not common enough in our county, and that we should think really, really seriously about anything that might cause a reduction in them. So thank you very much for your time.
Jim Rader. Jim Rader.
I live at 13,200 Little Colder Road, Brockbridge, Ohio. I'm here as a board member of the recycling center. I think what's happened here this evening is tremendous. It reminds me of what Winston Churchill once said, that democracy is a terrible form of government, just happens to be a lot better than anything else we've tried. And that's all I have to say, really. We're thankful for... Bruce is going to negotiate something here to continue on, and we'll make things work.
Nice to be with a bunch of friendly faces. I'm Roxanne Groff. I live on Marietta Run Road in Burn Township. Clearly, I don't live in the city. Actually, I've never lived in the City of Athens, except when I was in school. So about the only time I come into Athens anymore is for something fun or something exciting, and this certainly is the exciting part of that. Thank you, administration, for helping council see something that they probably would have figured out anyway, because they would have reviewed in great detail the RFPs and the bids and the score sheets, which I think many of them already have. Even though I've never lived in the city, I was, my first year of being in Athens County Commission was 1983, the magic year of when recycling came to its incredible beginning with the help of a very small group of very bright young people who decided that garbage was not garbage. Garbage was a commodity. Garbage should not be called trash. Garbage is something that can be recycled, reused, and made productive in our society. So, you know, I'm sure you know some of these things, but in 1984, the first curbside recycling program started in the City of Athens in the State of Ohio, the very first one. So recycling has been... So recycling has been first in the state of Ohio for curbside recycling. The Athens Recycling Program had all kinds of first awards in the state of Ohio with the innovation of Ed Newman, and Tom O'Grady, and Donna Goodman writing grants, and Dwayne Jaeger, and who, you know, became Reuse Industries eventually. These are people who believed not in just not throwing things away, but making it important. People in Athens think, "We own the recycling program in Athens. We're proud of it. We need it, we want it," and I think that there's a way that you all can make sure that that continues. There's a quote that I, I actually looked for this when I reviewed the bid proposals. This is a quote from Carol Cure, and it was, this was said years ago, and it was important then, and it's more important now than ever, "With the threat of global climate change and ever-growing population, waste reduction is not only important but essential. It takes efforts of many groups to instill change in communities, garner business support, and create action among individuals. We cannot just continue to throw things away." So, knowing now that your policy gives an incredible amount of discretion to City Council to make a decision, and the Administration has given you the incentive and permission to do so, I know you all are going to do the right thing.
Thank you. Heather.
Heather Cantino, 33 Cable Lane, Athens. I've lived in Athens since 1981. I'm very relieved that here at the procedure happening tonight. Just a couple, a few points, I won't go through everything I was going to say. As someone pointed out, it was impossible under the process and the waiting for the best-scoring company to have any chance, given the way the waiting worked with the priority given to the supposed cheapest bid. And I say "supposedly" because if Waste Away couldn't do it for that and went under, and AHRC went under, Rumke, as the most expensive of three bids, would be the only one left, and of course would have free rein to charge whatever it wanted. It's also only apparently cheaper because long-term costs and environmental footprints are not quantified or even specified in the evaluation, and this long-term cost is not considered because it received so low awaiting in the overall scoring. It's very vague. I found that the scoring sheets really frustrating to look at because they were so arbitrary. And then where two reviewers rated AHRC the highest on most accounts, the other two didn't even agree with each other and rated it lowest. So there's something wrong with the scoring if that can happen, if people are really acting objectively. I also wondered why there was anonymity of reviewers this year when there was transparency in 2015. I think this process should be much more transparent and much more quantified what these scores really mean. Was AHRC's use of solar panels taken into account on the environmental footprint? I doubt it was, because two reviewers did not rate AHRC highest on that, and I don't, and given the proximity of the recycling facility to the city in their case, it doesn't make sense how those numbers or those ratings were developed. What would the environmental footprint implications and externalized costs be of choosing Waste Away for the county as a whole if AHRC goes under? I mean, that's an environmental footprint issue that needs to be addressed in any scoring. I don't see any evidence that Waste Away actually effectively recycles most of what they pick up as recycling. We know AHRC has a 93% recovery rate, and Waste Away doesn't even list theirs. And I'm just, finally, there were two questions on the 2015 scoring sheet that were omitted, and that would have given quite a bit of discretion to raise the scores for innovation. And actually, the recovery rate was the other question that was lost. I did look up customer satisfaction with the Granville account and see quite a bit of dissatisfaction. I think those things should be looked at, and also employee dissatisfaction in other Waste Away franchises. If it's a franchise, it's apparently a national company. Those were from different states.
If you've got any other comments, Heather, we welcome them as we look at the evaluation. Chris Schmell.
My name's Chris Schmell, and I live out in Alexander Township. I'm an Athens County Commissioner, and I want to thank the Council and Administration. Thank you. I'm also on the Solid Waste District Board, and I was previously the Recycling Center Board Chair. And a little history lesson as far as, you know, I think there was mention about in the past, the city had municipal waste collection, and then it became this tangled web with the Solid Waste District. And the nonprofit, I think, has actually been around since the 90s. And that was very complicated. When I became a Commissioner back in 2012, that was one of my main goals, was to try to help, just like we've heard many times tonight, get that single-stream recycling going that the city wanted, the university wanted, the Solid Waste District Plan called for. And, you know, I had a lot of sleepless nights. I know some people in here can attest to that. You know, and I signed my name on these, like, pretty important documents down at the bank when we borrowed a lot of money to try to, like, serve your needs. And I'm no longer on the board, but I do think that, you know, we have been here to serve the needs of the community. And the decisions, yeah, that you guys make in the city have a ripple effect in the county, the Solid Waste District, and the region. So I just want to say thank you for, you know, spending some more time and getting this right. I think there's a lot of good questions that we could be asking. I think the, as a Commissioner, I'm up here at the courthouse, and I'm constantly, every morning, I walk by the dumpster. And, you know, the Uptown franchise is like a huge hole in your pricing strategy, because you have a lot of landlords, you have all kinds of people that come uptown, grow stuff in there. That's a big burden on the pricing. So I really would suggest that Council really take a look at that, because there needs to be more accountability, I think, with how waste is getting disposed of right now. And I mean, I think we could do a lot better personally. And I think without the AHRC in the picture, in the community, I think, you know, not only would our local economy suffer, but our diversion rates, et cetera, you've already heard of a million things like that. But thank you again, and hopefully we'll get it right the next time. Thank you.
Andy Vogt.
Again, my name's Andy Vogt. I live out at 9142 Five Points Road in Athens. However, I own 11 pieces of property within the City of Athens. I own Athens Insurance, and for roughly 30 years, I've been in the business of identifying, underwriting, and mitigating risk. One of the things that became quite clear to me when I saw the, when I saw the bid was really the lack of leaning on a good, solid performance bond. Do you, I assume you guys know what a performance bond is, but basically, in lieu of a performance bond for such a big job, a, let's just use Waste Away as an example, if their bid was $1 million, they could give 10% of half of the contract in lieu of a performance bond. So let's say, in the case Ms. Cantino had laid out, the, they were given the contract tonight, we go under, they get into this realizing it is far more than what they originally thought it was going to be, and then they struggle. All of a sudden, we've lost our recycling plant. And then now we're just looking at potentially going at Rumke, and that's scary to me. I think that needs to be addressed, and, you know, just to protect the city. And it's, they're not cheap, but they basically do the job you folks need them to do. Secondly, City Service Safety Director Andy, thanks for digging into that a little deeper. We appreciate the work. Of course, because we came out all right on that, but I think our friend, my friend Jim Rader was a little humble. Jim has spent a ton of time, and as stated, we're a nonprofit organization. We are not sitting here trying to answer to stockholders. We are not answering to, you know, a family who's trying to make money on this endeavor. We have gone about this in the most painstakingly tedious way in an effort to try and keep costs low while maintaining our goals of the recycling. And with the fact that all of the commodity prices plummet, and each month, we hear it again, they plummeted again, then again. You know, we're very responsible. We take our role seriously, and, you know, thanks again for your time tonight. Thank you.
John Johnson.
Hi, I'm John Johnson. I'm ASME Regional Director for High Council Aid, and I represent the workers of 3050. Heard a lot of stuff earlier today. I didn't want to defer my minutes, but I wanted to thank the guys and the letter they put out, Chrissy Erder, and also Bruce. He knows we have a good connection, we work together, and appreciate the mayor and the Administration on the action taken today. And we'll work with you guys. Appreciate you. That's it. Thank you.
Kathleen Sullivan.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Sullivan. I live at 33 Woodward Avenue. I'm here just as a resident, but I'm a political science professor at OU, and my research project is on the development of municipal garbage collection in the 1890s. And so I think about this a lot. And one thing that I look at is not just that cities picked up garbage in the 1890s and learned how to pick it up, but I also look at their response to innovation. There were a lot of engineers around with lots of really cool ideas in the 1890s. And I look at the relations between city governments and the businesses they contracted with. And so I do want to say that when we contract out, we are not contracting away our public values, and I appreciate Mr. Crowell, you reading the document that lists our values. But it seems that in this bidding process, we've seen that there's something wrong with the way we're stating those values. They're not specific enough, and they're not measuring what we care about. So to piggyback on Heather Cantino's points, I'd like to share a few ideas that have come from my own research about what we can consider when we're measuring how well a contractor can actually recycle now in 2019. The first issue is compliance. The people in the progressive era ran into this problem called the garbage can problem, where they were collecting garbage, but people actually weren't putting their garbage cans out or not did. And you can't, like, it's hard to tell people what to do in their own homes. And we see this today in recycling, right? People don't know what to recycle, they might not be complying with recycling, the rules change. We might have students who moved out from Cleveland, and they don't know what our local rules are. And so it's really important that our contractors demonstrate that they can communicate with residents and tell them what the rules are, and then that's where compliance happens. And our current recyclers are great, and they're considerate, and they're just great for householders to work with. The second issue that comes up is the issue of responsiveness. The market for recyclables is changing all the time. We saw this with the plastic bag issue in the last year. And recycling services cannot be static, and so we need a company to demonstrate that it is going to respond to some of the challenges that come in the recycling market, and also the opportunities that are going to come in the recycling market. And that should be in the bid. They should be able to show that they can perform that. The last thing is innovation. A contractor needs the incentive to be able to develop the technology to make full use of recyclable materials. And if they don't have certainty of the contract, they're not going to invest in new technology now if it's up to the caprice of the city. So our policy already includes long-term investment in the community. We need to be sure that the contractor is assured that they're going to be able to have a contract so they invest in the future. We need to really think, I appreciate the opportunity for us to talk about it. Thank you.
Aaron Seibel. I'll tell you what, I'll tell you the next person after Aaron, so you can be working your way over. It's Kate Enger. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Seibel. I live on Round Drive in the Plains. As you can see, I'm an employee of Athens Hocking Recycling. I've only been there for a few short months. I'm elbow-deep in trash, trying to sort out recycling to, you know, better help everything, to help us, you know, reuse stuff, to help basically the planet. I feel a sense of accomplishment, even though I'm digging through trash all day, trying to get that done. When I found out that I may lose my job, it was kind of heartbreaking. I do thank everybody for taking that time to reconsider all the bids and giving us a little bit of emergency extension. It made my heart race a little bit to know that I'm not going to lose my job at the end of June. I didn't really know much about the facts about what's really going on, so I can't really state much on that. I just know that Athens Hocking Recycling has given me an opportunity to be a productive member of society today, and I feel like that I can give back to my community. I've only been in Athens County for two years, and now I feel like I can give back by being an employee of Athens Hocking Recycling. Thank you.
And after Kate, it will be Sarah Conley-Baloo.
Good evening. My name is Kate Enger. I'm the Diversion Coordinator for the Athens County Municipal Court. And if I'm counting right, I am representing the fifth organization that is here to say our organization appreciates working with the existing Athens Hocking Recycling as it exists now. That's something I think I would love to see considered as you revise the criteria that you're looking at, the ability of an organization to connect with its community. That is a real strength that we have right now, and I'm not sure that an outside franchise could come anywhere close to that. I was glad to hear that integrity was one of the things that Mr. Crowell mentioned, and I've got to say, these guys have it. When I started as Diversion Coordinator, I was asked to find governmental or nonprofit organizations that would be willing to work with people who are in trouble with the law. Come on, bring us a van full of people who got caught stealing, carrying some drug paraphernalia, climbing on a police horse drunk and falling off. Sure, bring them on over, we'll work good in for the day. That was not an easy job, especially when it came to wintertime, and we needed to be indoors somewhere. I called the Recycling Center, they said, "Bring them on over." We go there about once a month, and it meets our needs perfectly. They communicate with us so clearly. They give us a chance to get people out of Palmer Street and see a little more of the community and what's going on here, and the good people who work here. And they do work really hard. When I'm bringing people back, at the end of the day, they will often say, "I had no idea people work that hard." And that's just from working in the building sorting. It's nothing like the guys who are out there schlepping those huge containers all day long. They work really hard for their money. I hope that we will protect those union jobs. Stepping out of my diversion role for a moment, as somebody who used to work at Hocking College and has seen the effect of the union busting there... and has seen the effect of the union busting there, I do not want to see any more of that for Athens County. It is... The last thing we need to do is destroy more union jobs in this county. Making sure I said everything I had on my little list here. I hope you will consider more than a year of continuing to work with these fine men, and that as, men and women, and that as you continue to look at the criteria for choosing a long-term partner, you look at some of those things, like connection with the community and the provision of really good jobs for good people. Thank you.
Sarah's coming up, and the next person after that will be Andrew Ladd.
Thanks, President Nysley. Thanks, council. My name's Sarah Conley-Baloo. I live on Peek Smith Road in Athens County. As many of us have heard tonight, this is a vital organization in our community. And one piece that Debbie Phillips touched on earlier in her presentation was the important investments that have been made in Athens Hocking Recycling Center from the organization's standpoint. And I guess I want to mention one in particular that's been of interest to me from a sustainable energy standpoint. The recycling center is a very optimal location for an anaerobic biodigester. This is a place that is set up quite well to receive waste materials, biosolids, from the city of Athens and other septic haulers in southeast Ohio, receive it, insert it into a digestion facility, and produce fuel. That fuel can run our recycling center, can run the trucks on compressed natural gas, and really build out the infrastructure significantly. It's a huge endeavor, as you can only imagine. We're only about, I don't know, maybe a year and a half into that process, and it's been, I think, a really productive discussion, and we have some excellent experts at the table. So when I heard the news about the contract, I was very concerned about this project in particular, because I do think the city's commitment to sustainability does pin on reducing our energy use and increasing our renewable energy development. This is a key method to do that. And so I just want to make sure that it goes in record that this project, I think, would be really jeopardized. And when we are thinking about the investments that we make in our community for generations and generations and generations, to me, this is a pivotal decision-making point, and projects like this are, would be impacted. So thank you for taking the time to reconsider and really put into the process all of these important factors.
Ed, excuse me, yeah, Andrew Ladd, and then after that, Ed Newman.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Ladd. I am, I live at 24 Dalton on the east side of Athens. I am the recycling and zero-waste manager for Ohio University, but I'm here representing myself as a citizen of Athens tonight. I'm actually gonna start at the end, so I don't run out of time. You've all talked about reestablishing the bid process. I think it would become very important that, as part of that process, that members of city council and/or the sustainability commission that the city has previously approved become members of that team from the beginning, helping write the criteria and judging the criteria. But I appreciate that the process is starting again. I have more than 15 years in recycling, waste reduction, and zero-waste systems. In my time, I've seen dozens of contracts, things from one page to 73-page answers. I've written good contracts, I've written bad contracts, to be perfectly honest. One of the things that was set up here earlier by Councilwoman Grace is that we have to be willing to pay for local. And that was backed up by Councilwoman McKee, that, you know, the monetary needs to be a major focus on this. But I think it's a little bit of a false argument right now, because I don't think you're really comparing a realistic, responsible best bid for approximately $1 million with the next best bid for approximately $1.4 million. You're comparing a bid for $1.4 million that is very realistic, based on experience, and will meet the needs of the city, with a bid for just under $1 million that, quite honestly, as Chris has said earlier, you know, reads like marketing propaganda and is based on really inexperience and best wishes at this point, from my reading of it. And some examples of that, in 2018, the city of Athens sent roughly 5,500 tons of municipal solid waste to the landfill. At $35.25 per ton tipping fees, that is 194,000 just in tipping fees. The Waste Away contract bid had a total of 416,000 for landfill services, meaning 46% of their entire bid is eaten up just in landfill fees, meaning that they have only approximately $200,000 left for hauling, for their fleet management, for their gas, for their labor, for their transportation of bins and roll-offs, for buying new bins. And it really strikes me as a very unrealistic possibility. I could go on with others. Let me talk about MoveOut. Very last thing. $29,000 versus $7,500 just for MoveOut? I spent more than $7,500 just on student labor for MoveOut. There's no way that was a realistic bid. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Ed Newman next, and then after that, Andrea Jones.
Boy, do I love my community. Thank you, everybody, for showing up and speaking up. This is blowing me away. I've never experienced anything as cool as this. You know, I wrote down a bunch of stuff, and one time or another, it's been covered tonight. I'm the board chair, by the way, of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center, Ed Newman, 30 Courier Street. I'm a proud Athens resident. And I want to, I spend a lot of time trying to make Athens a better place, you know, for no money. So, you know, there's no argument how cool Athens Hocking is, what we've been trying to do over the years. You know, we've been afraid of lowball bids for most of our existence. We're a little more vulnerable to it these days, and we have to work on our, and we're working on our business, our business plan, to try to be more resilient that way. But we do offer a lot, and the numbers that you got were accurate numbers. And I dare say, the numbers you got for Rumpke were accurate for somebody from further away to be able to do what you're asking. I felt like this bid process was pretty flawed. It didn't, it felt unfair, and I was worried, you know, I've been worried about that, and I think maybe we'll try to do better next time. We're happy to engage with that. So let's work together to make every, you know, to be win-win, to make everything, to achieve way greater heights than we even have. We have greater aspirations than, you know, we're only at 25%. We should be doing, you know, way more than that. But it was a big deal just to get to that from 8%, not too many years ago. We took all the risks, we took a lot of risk, spent $6 million, you know, spent $6 million upgrading everything, trying to work better between management and labor, which had some problems with leadership in the past on that. We've been trying to mend those things, mend things in Hocking County and Athens County to bring people together and bridge issues, rather than the contentious stuff that went on in the past. And I guess it's showing, because people are showing up without a whole lot of asking to defend what we've achieved so far. So thank you, everybody, and let's do a better job this next year.
And after Andrea will be Todd Swerengen.
I'm Andrea Jones. I'm on the board of the Athens Hocking Recycling Center and have been for the last few years. It has been an absolutely wonderful experience being on the board, learning a lot more about recycling and waste management than I ever thought would be possible. I help out some, I try to come with up to a lot of the tours when there's tours offered. And every single time, I walk through with Bruce and the workers there working, I learn something new. The most important thing that I'd like to share with you, city council, tonight is what you said, how it affected me as far as your role in the southeast Ohio community. It is so important what you do and your sustainability goals. You are a role model for all of southeast Ohio. I live in Hocking County, and I want to be on the active with recycling here because it's moving and it's happening. And I feel as though I'm able to, through my association with being on the board, working with Bruce, and working in the whole region, that I'm able to take things back home to my home county and help improve things there. I really, as a resident, as a resident of Hocking County, I really, really appreciate the leadership that you've taken on sustainability issues. Really, really appreciate that. Thank you again for your reconsideration. And if you haven't been to the recycling center recently for a tour, I'm sure that Bruce and the other staff would be more than happy to walk you through again. We do them quite regularly, lots of student groups, lots of schools, and 4-H clubs, and everyone else walking through, learning about recycling. Thank you.
All right, we've got Todd Swerengen, and then after that, Ann Moneypenny.
My name is Todd Swerengen. I've been a resident of Athens County for 20 years, been vocal environmental advocate for probably 35, closer to 40 years, ever since I was a teenager. One, I am stunned by the caliber and quality of the people that have spoken here tonight and the way they've expressed themselves on an issue that seems to have been largely glossed over and expedited. I hope council and administrators realize just what resource they've got at their fingertips, and they access that from this point forward, instead of carrying the ball by yourselves, or largely by yourselves. It's Councilwoman Grace and Councilwoman Fall for your comments. There's a cost to sustainability. The question is whether Athens and the residents in the area are willing to pay that cost. The question is whether administrators are willing to own up to what the residents perceive as the best benefit for their community. I registered comments, given the hot link to Ms. Walker, to give to council, comments, questions about the process, flaws about the process. There's nothing that I could possibly say here in three minutes or 300 minutes that hasn't been addressed already by the people. But this is only a reprieve. The city has a year to address this issue again, and it can't be done in the last 45 days of the next year. It needs to begin tomorrow. Councilman Risner, when you ask what council should do next week, perhaps it should appoint some sort of citywide committee for all comers to bring all their knowledge base and put it before the council, to put it before the city administrators, so that they can work from it and come up with the best possible solution and be, and remain, a model for the state of Ohio, if not large parts of the country. I'll leave it at that.
And after Ann will be Ellie Hamrick.
Ann Moneypenny, 32 Fern Street in Athens, and also out in Alexander Township at 11875 Banjo Hill Road. I've worked with the AHRC for the last four years now around the table at MoveOut. I'm also a landlord in the city of Athens. I have 23 properties that they help us keep in good shape. And I have nothing but great things to say about them as an organization and as human beings, as I've gotten to know many of them, working with them. When I first saw this issue in the paper and then started contacting people, I immediately was completely thrown off on that, on the bid. I knew that there was, I didn't see any way that they would come in higher than they needed to. I've known many of them personally, and I know how vulnerable they feel on that. And I also knew they know their costs so well. We sit around that table for months on end and talk about how to manage MoveOut, which is just such a small part of their business, but it can devastate their costs. I mean, this is, it's unpredictable, but yet they know how to predict it now, because we've been doing it together for so long. And that's just, as I see it, one small piece of a larger puzzle. I think, I really appreciate that the administration created this memo today, and that they're taking a step back, and that we're gonna look at this in a different way. I think, like healthcare, unfettered capitalism is never the way to go when we're talking about something that includes our environmental costs. As everybody has explained here today how deep, wide, and broad it is that you have costs, these underlying things that, you know, some of it which I didn't even know, Sarah Conley-Baloo, thank you for mentioning that, the, you know, the innovative technology coming forward, that if we lose this gem now, we won't have in the future. How do you put a cost to that? And I now see it's charged with the administration and council to come up with a model to say, how does, how do we take this into effect, into account? And that the lowest bid, in this case, is probably never going to be the best bid for the city. And that's part of the reality. And how do you own up to that in a state that wants to make laws so that we have to take the lowest? So there's a push and pull there that I think is really important. And we're such a strong community, I want to see us overcome that sense of unfettered capitalism and put a rein on something that needs to be for the greater good, for our environment, for our health, and for the people who work at the AHRC, doing a fabulous job and providing living wages, which I don't think can be underestimated in our county. Thank you very much for the time.
After LA will be Melena Miller.
Hi, my name is Ellie Hamrick. I'm a renter on the south side of town, and I'm a member of the Athens Revolutionary Socialists. I'm also running for an at-large seat on city council. I'd like to mention that a few more members of Athens Revolutionary Socialists are here in the room to show their support, as well as more that were waiting out in the hallway, along with some members of the Democratic Socialists of America. So to the union members in the room, I want you to know that your friendly neighborhood socialists have your back in this and any other fight. I want to speak in favor of keeping the contract. AHRC employs 32 union workers and an additional five non-union workers, all of whom receive health benefits. WasteAway is a non-unionized company. If they could underbid AHRC, it is because they are paying their workers less than a living wage and failing to provide adequate benefits. Any savings for the city would come from the backs of the working class. The same is true even if AHRC's contract is renewed. I think their workers ought to make more than the $10 to $13 an hour some of them make now, which is not enough to live on. We've been singing their praises all night, and we know that the services they provide are vital to the health of our city. If that means the city has to pay a little more, so be it. There is plenty that can be cut from unnecessary and oppressive policing. Athens County is the poorest and most unequal county in Ohio. The Democratic Party has run Athens with virtually no opposition, at least since George W. Bush's first term, and yet have done nothing to change this fact. While landlords, bosses, and top university administrators prosper, the rest of us are struggling to make ends meet in a city where rent is skyrocketing and wages are stagnant. We need for more workers in Athens to be unionized and fighting for fair wages, benefits, and working conditions. The least the city can do is to stay out of our way. Cutting AHRC's contract will result in the loss of dozens of union jobs in a situation where only about 6% of private sector workers belong to a union. Lastly, I'd like to take some issue with the metaphor of the stool that many people have been using, where we have kind of three equal values of people, planet, and profit that should be given equal weight. I think people and planet should absolutely come first, and I also think those two are complementary to each other and in direct conflict with the profit motive. As councilmember Fall correctly alluded, our planet is facing an unprecedented crisis. I'm 27. In my lifetime, 90% of amphibian species have gone extinct, 70% of mammal species have gone extinct, and millions of people have been killed and displaced as a result of climate change and broader ecological catastrophe. Starting in the year 2030, ecological disaster is going to get... Starting in the year 2030, ecological disaster is going to get much, much worse, much, much more quickly than the nightmare we are already living. It is not an exaggeration to say that billions of human lives are at stake in the short-term future. Capitalism is premised on infinite expansion and growth. That's what capital is, it's money used to make more money. One more decade of capitalism will literally destroy life as we know it forever. Therefore, workers' power, including union jobs and union militancy, is our best line of defense against the total destruction of the planet. So I urge you to keep AHRC's contract and to fight for better working conditions for the workers that they have. Thank you.
After Melena, we've got Warren Hayden.
Thank you so much. My name is Melena Miller. I live at 25 Graham Drive. I'm the vice chair of the Far East Neighborhood Association, though I am not speaking on behalf of FINA tonight, I'm speaking personally. And I pretty much am throwing my notes away because a lot of this has been covered. You know, I've always been so proud, this is my third time living in Athens. I came here in 1963 to go to school, and I've been back so many times. I've always been so proud of, you know, this Athens Sustainability Action Plan and our goal for 90% recyclables diverted from the landfill by 2020. In the 15 years I worked for visiting nurses and hospice, and the five years since, I left. For 20 years, I've been personally hauling recyclables, recyclable DME, that's durable medical equipment, and leftover medical supplies from southeastern Ohio in my car at my cost to Cleveland to a place called MedWish. It's the only place in the entire state. And they send all these medical supplies and crutches and wheelchairs and everything else reused, has worked with me. One time I had a backseat loaded with my dog, 11 sets of crutches, a potty chair, and God knows what, the trunk loaded, everything else. These things are shipped overseas to countries who cannot afford to buy these things. We can't, and these things would normally, and did for many years, end up in the landfill I got a call from them two weeks ago. I've been trying for seven years to establish some kind of a site here for bringing, but we don't have any buildings. We have no warehouse space. We have no place to keep inventory. I just had four calls this week about more medical supplies. My garage is always loaded with them. So I've really been involved. I've been involved with the student MoveOut every year for several years. You know, this AHRC, these guys are really tremendous people, and the organization works well. I love my trash haulers, I just love them to death. And on those mornings when I forget to get up to get the trash out in time, they'll come up to my garage and pull it down and put it in. This morning I got a call about HB 6, which is House Bill 6, which is going to raise my electric rates now because the state senate and the state legislature is going to revive two old nuclear plants and two coal plants. You know what? I don't want to pay a higher electric bill, I don't care about that, but I would not mind paying more for my trash pickup. If we could just, please come together and make this happen. I know you want to review this in six months, but these are very important ways. And I want to say one more thing. They're only, I'm in the 25% of residents who own our own homes here. The other 75% of homes here are owned by people, many of whom who do not live in the state of Ohio. That's, those are the people who are responsible for their students' trash. We've got to get a better handle on it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Andy Stone. Thank you, AHRC.
And is Warren Hayden still here? I know I saw him come in earlier. Okay. We'll move, we can come back to him if he comes back in. Jim Mason is next, and then after that, Grace Corbin.
Grace left.
And Grace left, okay. Sean Ellis is the next person. Sean Ellis isn't here. Shannon Stewart, they may have, okay, okay, Shannon, come on up. And after that, Tom O'Grady. After her.
My name is Shannon Stewart. I live on State Route 685 in Gloucester. So I take my recycling to the rural drop-off, the roll-off at Hatcap in Gloucester, and thank you, AHRC, for supporting that. Otherwise, there would be a lot of stuff in my garage and not just Melena's garage. I do want to thank the city administrators for being responsive to the voices and the stories that you heard. And I want to thank the council and all the employees for, especially on behalf of the hallway squatters, for having the live feed out in the hallway so I could hear all of the good points that were made already this evening. That means my list is a lot shorter. But I've, since I've heard of this decision, I've been talking to people in our region. I've been talking to city residents who are supportive of additional fees for things that support sustainability and support the really important sustainability plan that Athens has. We know that just a few months ago, a lot of city residents voted for increased fees so that we could support solar and sustainable energy on city buildings. And I see this as very much in partnership with that decision. I've been talking to other local rural residents, like my friends from Albany, who also depend on rural AHRC recycling, which we're a little bit worried about if this contract is not to be renewed far into the future. And I've also been talking with people, interestingly, from other places that aren't southeast Ohio. I spoke with an elected official in Columbus who I had the chance to meet, who was talking about how Columbus is trying to move farther ahead on composting for their city residents. And I was like, hey, guess what we have in Athens? I'm really proud of the composting facility and the composting pickup that we have. I myself, while I don't live in the city, I take advantage of that service when I volunteer at our free meals here. Almost all of them have the bucket pickup, which is much nicer than sending scraps home with someone who has chickens or something like that. And I also got the chance to meet an elected official from a township in Santa Fe or near Santa Fe, New Mexico, who also was really impressed upon visiting Athens. She went to the farmer's market this week, and she was really impressed with the composting bucket exchange. That's a community that we think of as like pretty progressive, there are a lot of wealthy people there. They don't have something like that. So that's incredibly exciting to think about a little town in southeast Ohio being leaders in this field and making headway in the way that we do. We are leaders in education. We are leaders in communication about recycling, just because of the people who have been at the forefront of this effort from the very beginning. And I think that when we think about investment in our region, when we think about, you know, Appalachia, we have to take that on, we have to take, we need investment from other parts of the world sometimes, we have to be walking the talk in order to garner that investment. We have to, we have to be supporting good local jobs. We have to be in solidarity with union workers. We have to be showing that we're caring for our planet, and we have to be acting in right relationship with our residents, which I think tonight has been a really good example of that. And I just hope that the city council administration, that everybody can work together and make sure that happens, or we're going to be back again, making these same points again. This thriving sustainability plan is non-negotiable, as my friend Badger said, and I truly agree with that. Thank you.
Thanks. Tom O'Grady is next, and then after that, Damon Crane.
My name's Tom O'Grady. I'm from around here. I'd like to thank council for the opportunity and the administration for doing the important work they've just done. And I'd also like to reach out and thank David Brooks and David Wern, and these guys have been picking up solid waste and recycling here in Athens. I know David Brooks has been at it for more than 33 or 4 years. Doesn't matter what kind of day it is, you know, if it's street group, if it rains, they're going to go inside and wait and finish patching the road the next day. These guys have to go out and pick up an ever-increasing volume of material every single day of the year that they're working. There's not like, oh, well, it's 4 o'clock, we'll finish this route tomorrow. Doesn't work that way. So appreciate the work you guys have been doing for longer than any of us have really been thinking about it. April of 2019, that'd be last month, marks the 35th anniversary of this community-created program that involved hundreds of block leaders, Atco Sheltered Workshop, and other citizens and community leaders. And they helped launch the first curbside recycling program in the state of Ohio. Solid Waste District employees were green workers for 20 years before that term was coined here in Athens. The program has generated millions of dollars over these decades, money for services rendered and money pulled right out of the trash can that was earned by selling recovered materials to industry. For 35 years, these employees have spent that money locally on food, fuel, mortgages, taxes, et cetera. With global climate change rapidly moving to the top of agendas around the world, it would be tragic to now outsource such a service of community pride. We will be sending tremendous financial resources out of Athens County. Waste minimization and reuse are the first line of offense in sustainability. Recycling is the number-one educational tool to move that agenda forward. It's time to reinvest in this community's best opportunity to create meaningful employment and to move towards sustainability. This program is a cherished part of the legacy of Athens County. The crowd here tonight demonstrates that. Good luck getting that kind of buy-in and support by outsourcing jobs and money for this critical public service. And it's high time to think much bigger about how to solve these problems. And it's not all about collection and recycling. It's time to start looking at the source. Let's reinvest and fortify this critical aspect of our economy. Thank you.
After Damon, I think Katie Roberts was going to speak, but I think she's left. So after that, it will be Matt Dutton.
Hi, my name's Damon Crane. I live at 96 Hudson Avenue in Athens. I'm a member of the Southeast Ohio Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm an independent candidate for mayor of Athens this year. I'm afraid I have somewhat of a less upbeat take on this situation. I have a take that's probably more similar to the folks you've heard from tonight from AHRC, who had to spend the last week worrying if they were going to lose their jobs in a county that has some of the highest, if not the highest, poverty and wage inequality in the entire state of Ohio. I think that this situation is a monumental failure on the part of city leadership. If I understand Service Safety Director Stone correctly, here's what happened. The city administration tried to take the refuse and recycling contract away from a local nonprofit union provider with a realistic cost assessment and award that contract to a non-local, for-profit, non-union provider with an unrealistic cost assessment. And I read the letter that the current city administration sent to AHRC, acting as though this was a done deal, that council and the public had no say in it. It was ridiculous, misleading, and incredibly insensitive to the workforce of AHRC. Now, as if that wasn't bad enough, after there was this huge public outcry in response to the attempted actions of the city administration, City Service Director Stone tells us that the current administration actually realizes it totally botched the entire bidding process, thereby creating a major impending public health emergency. And for some reason, many members of council think this warrants a round of applause and several pats on the back for current city administrators. I disagree. I don't think people should be, public servants in particular, should be commended for failing to do their jobs, especially when that failure creates so much hardship for hard-working folks in this community who are doing their job at AHRC. Now, given that I'm running for mayor, my perspective may seem a little biased there, so I won't belabor this point anymore. Instead, I want to focus on something that I think could have enabled us to avoid this entire mess and hopefully will enable us to avoid it in the future. We all know Athens is a progressive, left-leaning community. As individuals, most of us try to take into account the social impacts of our spending decisions. We try to buy local, to buy organic, to buy fair trade, to buy union, to buy from worker-owned cooperatives. And as a city, we are supposed to do the same thing. In 2008, the city passed a Responsible Contractor Bidding Criteria as a resolution by City Council. Members Nysli and Butler were on council at the time. Director of Rural Action, Debbie Phillips, who you heard from earlier, was also on council and voted for it.
Mr. Crane.
And it seems to have been totally disregarded here.
Mr. Crane, thank you for your comments.
So hopefully, we can take things like that into account in the future.
Thanks. And Matt will be next, and after that, Tricia, is Tricia Lockman still here? She signed in. Okay, if not, then the person after that is Talia. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank the city administration for publicly changing its mind. That's a hard thing to do, and I think that the thinking through of this decision is useful, and so I just wanted to thank them for that. My name is Matt Tatar. I live at 146 East State Street in Athens. I've lived here for two years, and I am only speaking for myself and my family. I have two small children, and so I care about where they're going to live in the future. It occurs to me that a lot of what I've going to say has already been said, and so I just wanted to keep it very brief, but a number of the heads of the nonprofit organizations in this town have spoken to how AHRC is funded via a number of different kinds of grant models. That is impossible for a private company to do. So in thinking through the waste collection contract, we need to think about the kinds of money we're giving up that is not in relation to the fee for trash collection. It seems to me that the Athens, or the Ohio University Foundation, Sage, Sugar Bush Foundation, Rural Action, all of these are grant-funded organizations that also contribute to AHRC and will not have the space for innovation that AHRC provides if AHRC goes out of business by losing this contract. So I want to think about those kinds of ripple effects as just a way of getting money into this community. The last thing I want to say is that I think there are a very few number of ways that a city council is able to significantly impact the environment. And it seems to me that waste collection and innovative waste solutions are one of the huge ways that a city council really has the opportunity to do something impactful here. And so whether we want to go with three legs, or we want to weight a leg, or take out a leg, it seems to me that maybe we should think about what of any opportunities actually exist for a city council to impact the environment that we live in. And this is a huge one. Thanks.
Talia, come on up. And after Talia, Nancy Bain, but I think she may have left also. So it'd be Seth Ellington after Talia.
I'm proud to be representing some of the kids that couldn't come to this meeting and wanted to share today. Mayor Patterson came to my class and said he loved the greenery of Athens and that he wanted to protect nature. So now's your chance. Protect nature, our nature, our recycling, and our compost. Now remember, earth is more important than your money.
And if Nancy isn't here, Seth Ellington? Yes.
Thank you. My name's Seth Ellington. I'm president and CEO of WasteAway Systems. I'd just like to clear a couple of things up. Our company was solicited to provide a bid for the city of Athens Waste Collection. We allocated quite a bit of time to prepare the bid. It's not something that we solicit, it's not something we came out and forced a city to go into, but as a nonprofit company versus a for-profit company, or whatever the case is, it's a private entity, therefore state law mandates that that bid needs to go out to the public. In 2000, end of 18, beginning of 2019, we bought a company in the Plains, Ohio. I own the company. We're not a national company. We're based out of Heath with an office in the Plains. In fact, we're a little bit closer to the city of Athens than the Plains, or than the Post Road facility that Athens Hocking Recycling operates. We've got individuals that work out of that office. They make $50,000 a year. We've got a 401K program, a health insurance program, and a profit sharing program. We put a competitive number to the bid in a measured waste system. Again, spending a lot of time in the city, looking at the franchise district, looking at every street, every at every street, every road. We run a fleet of trucks that are single axle. Every one of our trucks has one axle versus the current, which was something that the city administration wanted to have on certain roads for wear and tear. Let me also say that it's the company check, which I, thanks for mentioning that, but Ron Lucas is the one that said it would be okay to provide a company check for the bid. It's not something that we just did. I can tell you that the responsible bidding number that we're talking about, that everybody has said that we can't do it for that cheap, with technology that we have, with our trucks that we operate, with routing computers that we have in the trucks, we understand how to be the most efficient and effective companies we possibly can be. That's part of our business. We're a private, for-profit business, a multimillion-dollar company, but we've gotten to be to this point where we are today because we are efficient, we're effective, we understand our business very well, and I can tell you that we didn't bid this too low intentionally. We bid the number that we needed to bid. Excuse me. I kind of want to end with this. You take a $100 bill out of your pocket, and that's what you're going to take away from every single residence of the city of Athens. It's 100 bucks. You take the $400,000 delta that we had versus what our next lowest bidder was, and that's $400,000. Divide that by 4,002 units, that's 100 bucks. So I would ask that you at least think, think about our localness. We're hiring local guys here, too. We might not be Athens Hawking Recycling, but we're still hiring right from your local community. This is not going to a national company. I'm not a franchise. I started the company myself. So I would ask for the reconsideration. And if this happens again, I guess the only, let me just end with this. If this happens in another six months and another company comes in, or another year, what's the situation going to be then if Athens Hawking's not the lowest and most responsive bidder? Thank you.
Thank you. And Vicky Krist. And after Vicky, Robin, but I think Robin's left. Robin Dewey. So after that, it would be Cecilia Rinaldi. And is Vicky Krist from?
No, she's not.
She left from Waste Away. Okay.
I'll speak later. I'll speak her slot.
You're with the company, too?
Well, not actually.
My name's Don Ellington. I happen to be CESTAD. I don't work for Waste Away. I'm on the list there a couple down anyway.
Okay.
So you can cross me off.
Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to add a couple of things. I don't work for Waste Away. I have a real estate company. I watched this young man about eight years ago start this company with two guys with a packer truck and a roll-off, work his butt off for the last eight years to get where he is. Bought Waste Away, or started Waste Away, bought PDQ. He's turned this into almost an $8 million company. He does nothing but work. He is a terrific kid. And a lot of things that were said today about Waste Away, a lot of things this young lady back here said, she has no idea about Waste Away. She has no idea that they pay a great wage, they have terrific health insurance, they pay a 401K, they pay profit sharing. So a lot of things that were said, you have no idea. Also, I'd like to add, my part-time job happens to be president of North City Council. In fact, I think I talked to your colleague here the other day. I know how it is to sit up here. I've been on North City Council about 18 years. I've been president about eight years. I know how it is to sit up here and listen to everybody in the audience, and it's tough. I understand that. It's tough to listen to these folks that are talking about their local jobs, and I get that. I know how it is to do that. But I guess one thing you ought to think about, the administration put out this bid, again, Seth didn't come down here and say, "Let me bid." They contacted him. They put out the bid. They went through all kinds of, jumped through all kinds of hoops through the administration. They did interviews. They came up with the best company, which was Waste Away, to take this bid. And now it kind of seems like you're kind of walking backwards a little bit. But part of council's job up here is you have to be responsible for every taxpayer in the city of Athens, not just, sorry, but not just these folks that work here. So I think it's important that you take a look at that. So thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Okay, is Cecilia Rinaldi, is she here? Okay. Christine Miles? Jeff Hoover? Tracy Ellington? Joan Kornansky was here. Badger Johnson?
He left.
He left? Okay, all right. I think we're to the end of the comments for tonight. If anybody else has any other comments that they want to submit in writing, we'd be more than welcome to have those. And we thank you for your time. We have two other committees that we're going to move on to tonight. So I'll give you all a chance to exit. Yeah, sure. Take a one minute. Just breathe there for a second.
I totally, I plugged up what I wanted to say. I'm saying why I'm like, I don't know. I don't want to talk to you. I listened. But because it ensued last night, because it's a tornado warning on my brain, I know, right? Like, it was a tornado.
Councilmember Fall is chair. Councilmember Reisner McGee and Graves.
May I have these? Yes, may I? Are we going to need the other one?
She's singing that. Thank you.
We don't have sirens on the south side, so I heard a really good noise.
Oh, I heard the sirens and the announcements.
Oh, I know. I had six teenage boys in my placement, all in their underwear. It was pretty funny.
Yeah, I got my kids out of bed.
And then we had to run outside to get the cats, and then we ran inside.
No, I'm planning to go.
No, you're not.
Okay. We are.
Nobody's staying. I'm so sad. Planning Development Committee, we have four basic agenda items. Andy has access to the details of it. It's the TIF, the University Estate TIF project.
All right. So this is probably, of everything left on the agenda this evening, it's probably the most complicated item. So I'll try to do my best to explain it as quickly as possible, and everything else you should be able to thank relatively quickly. As everyone who's followed University Estates for the past 20 years knows, it's a development that started and then stopped during the real estate crisis in 2009, 2010, and failed to be built the rest of the way. University took Phase 3 and 4 and never were built. Additionally, a portion of Phase 2 was ever built as well. However, it was platted. It was accepted and platted, but it was never built. Since that time, and this is a small section at the back of the state court, since it was platted, we've had a couple developers come and look at it and basically say, "We can't build this for," we'd have to sell $700,000 houses to build the infrastructure necessary to support the number of lots that are there. And some of that is driven by the buildability or lack thereof of the lots. Some of it is driven by our subdivision regulations and how large they require the lots to be. And so, you know, it's languished, basically, and no one's been able to build this. In the meantime, we've had the Affordable Housing Commission meet repeatedly and talk about the needs in Athens for housing that sits in that middle range to be able to, you know, support a young family in the 200 to $250,000 range for housing. And so what we've had here is we've had a couple local developers come to us and say, "Is there any way that we can incentivize a way to build the kind of housing that the Affordable Housing Commission has said that they want?" And so we said, "We'll look into it." And we found a mechanism, and that mechanism is via tax incremental financing. We have one in the city right now, one TIF district, which was done in 2003, so, you know, quite a while ago for East State Street, and it's a little bit different kind than what we're proposing here. The one we're proposing here is called a 1075 TIF. And so what it does is it basically captures the increase in real estate taxes for 10 years from pre-development to post-development conditions, and then takes 75% of that additional increase in taxes and diverts that to the city for purposes of paying for infrastructure or doing whatever, you know, the city seems fit to do with that. It's important to draw this distinction from, you know, your traditional TIFs because in a situation with a traditional TIF, the school district must give concurrence, and they had to on the East State Street project as well. In a 1075 TIF, you have to notify them, but they don't have to give concurrence. This is not harming the school district if we were to move forward something like this because if it doesn't develop, that property tax increase never occurs anyway. So that's kind of a myth to dispel, that a TIF harms a school district. If something can't be developed, they wouldn't see that increase. And so we've engaged with the developers and worked through some stipulations that we would put on this development, and in return, the city would utilize the TIF money to subsidize their debt service for the infrastructure, publicly owned portion of their construction. So basically, they'll take a loan to build the roads, the sidewalks, the curbs, the sewers, the water lines for this small little development, and then they will go ahead and build it. We will levy the TIF as it goes forward, and the revenue that's captured from this, to a point, will pay back to the developer for them to service that loan on the infrastructure until some time that the infrastructure is paid for. Any additional money that comes in in that 10-year window on the TIF goes back into the city coffers into a specific fund, not unlike what we did on East State Street where there's a specific fund set up for it that we can use for future repairs to the infrastructure in that area and whatever purposes in the vicinity of the TIF we would see needed for. If we don't bring in enough money, then the developer's on the hook for the risk associated with that. So there are a few stipulations that we're levying on the developer. They basically would build approximately 50 units. Right now, there are 18 lots, so where would have been 18 homes, there will be 50 homes, and it'll be smaller, more closer to like what you saw in Harold Square, you know, something along those lines as opposed to the big houses. They would incorporate principles of universal design in all of the three-bedroom units. Approximately a third of those will be three-bedroom units, and then we'll have universal design specifically trying to reach a disabled and elderly population. Once their design is complete, they'll have to get letters of support from the city Affordable Housing Commission and the Disabilities Commission prior to construction. So that will be a stipulation as part of this agreement. The initial sale price of each unit is not to exceed $220,000 in 2020, and then not to increase more than 3% per year during the build-out period. So our goal is basically to cap the sale price of these units in order to meet the goals of the Affordable Housing Commission and put more homes on the market in the city that are in that range. And then properties must include covenants requiring being owner-occupied for the first five years from their initial sale, and the buyers must declare them as their principal residences for tax purposes. And the reason for that is to avoid speculation, where somebody would come in and just buy up all 50 of them because it's a great deal, because it will be a great deal. Now, there is one caveat on that, is that the developer themselves, while they're in the process of selling the homes, may rent them for that, you know, year or so in between when they get it finished and when they can turn around and sell the unit. So that's the one caveat that the developer asked for that we thought would be necessary. So furthermore, it's got to go through the official PUD process. They've got to hire an engineering firm. They have to pay all the capacity fees, just like any regular development would. The infrastructure, and this is key, and this is because, you know, we're using public money to basically reimburse for the infrastructure. The infrastructure must be built under prevailing wage. This is a legal requirement that we don't have any ability to get around. So since we're involved, it's got to be built under prevailing wage. And they have to obviously post a bond, just like any developer would as they're building it. So there are ultimately two significant documents. One document is the TIF legislation itself, and then the other is the agreement that we strike between me and the developer. That agreement will be attached to the legislation, and when you pass the legislation authorizing the TIF, the agreement will be part of that, and you'll be authorizing me to enter into this agreement with the developer. So this is kind of a pilot for us. This is the first time we've used a TIF as an incentivization to get the kind of development we want. We see this as being something that we can use in other places. We think this one is rather small, you know, and so we think this is a good one, and if we're going to screw it up and learn some lessons, we should screw it up and learn some lessons on a rather small thing as opposed to a big gigantic thing. And at the end of the day, the developer is the one carrying the risk here. And so I think this is a good way forward. I've put the documents that we just got back from Brickeren Eckler, I gave them to Debbie so you can take a look at them. We're going to have to get into those and make sure that it's written up correctly. We've gotten into it some, but my goal would be, and see, here's the deadline on this. The developers have an option that they have to exercise by 30 June. And so, you know, we've been waiting for a couple months to get this back from Brickeren Eckler, and now we've got it. And so if you, I don't have to sign the agreement by 30 June, but if you at least pass the legislation, they'll know that I've authorized to sign it, so I can sign it in July after the 30 days passed. So I'm not asking for suspension or emergency clause or anything like that, but I would like this to pass. So a special session on the 10th that would occur, so you'd have three full readings, and then pass on the 17th would allow the developers, you know, to know that it's going to happen, and they can exercise their option by 30 June, and then I can sign the agreement. So.
So this particular TIF is something that we learned about roughly 18 months ago, maybe two years ago. I picked up on this at a conference that I was attending to where Chris Schmank, who was with Brickeren Eckler at the time, was talking about not only DRDs, downtown redevelopment districts, but also other TIF mechanisms. Something I should mention is that our traditional TIF is 100% of the property valuation increases is captured, which is why we are required to bring this to the school board, Athens City School District, for, again, getting approval on their end. This is, as Service Safety Director mentioned, is a 75% capture. So the 25% that's still there, that still gets distributed to those who would be receiving that money over that 10-year period. And what I like about this particular TIF mechanism is at the end of that 10 years, that the school district becomes whole with this new property valuation. So in some ways, it's a windfall that's coming 10 years later. I think there is an option to extend it that still falls under ORC, but, you know, and again, as Service Safety Director has mentioned, you know, this is, I believe we're going to get this right, and I believe that this will also be a model for looking at other developable areas in the city of Athens. And what becomes that insurmountable, you know, obstacle in their way for making these things pencil out is a lot of times the infrastructure. For them to have to pay for the infrastructure and to build, it just doesn't, it's not cost, you know, it's cost prohibitive for them, and this just creates a way that we believe is going to help streamline that and to re-kickstart, or to kickstart, our affordable housing in the city of Athens.
Normally, in a PUD, the city council will come and accept or deny the PUD after it had been written. And this sounds like that process is not going to be followed?
No, it would. One of the, you know, one of the requirements is that they meet the standard city development requirement, which is to go through the PUD process. So the Planning Commission will review what they propose, and then will forward to the city council for approval of the plan. So I mean, if you decide, you know, there's an aspect of this that, you know, that all control that typically happens, you'll still retain. It's just that, you know, we're basically striking an agreement that says if you do everything we want you to do, then we'll subsidize your loan on the infrastructure portion of your project.
Well, and we've had problems with the privately developed infrastructure up there when it first happened, and that we ended up basically building it anyway, even though the builder was supposed to build it. So I think that having the covenants and the requirements is really a good thing. I would like to see some emphasis on using best design methods, sustainability, looking at permeability, and those sort of things when they're going through, because this is going to be a model. Let's do a model. Let's do a, you know, look at it from a conservation point of view and looking at whether it wants to be clustered, or how they build those houses out so that people up there get to have really nice space, but it also nice space, but it also works for the community and is long-term sustainable, especially when it comes to some of the off-site issues on it. So that's, I would like to see some of those because then we can use that as a model going forward. So.
Sarah? I think this sounds fantastic. This active chair of the affordability housing commission. This is exciting that there's something even like, you call it small, but 50 units is significant and to get 50 units under our target price point could make a significant difference in the city. I would love it if that owner occupied requirement could be longer than five years and I don't know.
We've talked about that because ultimately a covenant on a deed has to be enforced by somebody.
Right.
And we decided that five years was long enough that would avoid speculators, but at the back end, you know, I mean, there's covenants on deeds all over the place and there's no way the city can be the one that enforces covenants. And if there's not an association that is really, you know, going to force the covenant to continue to stay in place, then.
Well, yes. A preview of affordable housing recommendations is that there would be someone who is perhaps partially employed through city, partially through university. We, you know, we're recommending that there is at least a person in the city who, whose priority is affordable housing issues. And so I don't know if having, you know, if we have a person who is working, like developing the promotion of these because they're through city websites or hey, here is an opportunity in the city for housing, here are the resources for individuals looking for housing that could be built into the job. So, and I know this is like, this is a ways out, but I've, in some ways, five years is a long time, but in terms of people who are investing in real estate and watching, five years isn't very long. So if I, that's my only concern is I don't want to see it turned into not what our target is in a relatively short time. So.
Well, first, I'd like to say I'm glad that the mayor has learned something from all these conferences because I think it's a great idea. Okay. Although I have a little bit of, I have a little bit of concern on some things. Just offhand, I was curious, is there one builder who this is going to, who we're going to be working with and if so, which builder is it?
The company, and I've got it in here, they actually formed an LLC. It's currently cornerstone and they've done several of the houses.
Right, right.
The people involved are Brett Howard and Pat Lawson. They've worked in our community for a long time. And so it's not an out-of-town developer. And this is new for them as well. They've not, you know, gone to another community and worked out an incentive deal with another community. And so, I mean, they're learning at the same time, same time we are.
Right. Well, I do want to applaud you because I think it's a good idea. I have a little bit of concern as somebody whose property tax has gone up substantially for the city schools to watch the money shifted away, but I think this is, as you say, a potential windfall after 10 years. I think that's a good idea, so.
It's more of a delay.
Councilmember McGee, I try to steal as many ideas at these conferences as I possibly can.
I know you do. I've seen you. Very good.
Great. Thank you. Well, I think that this is really exciting so we can bring this up Monday.
Okay, we'll have it ready to go.
Great, thank you. More questions? Anybody in the audience?
I know you've heard a ton of comments today, so I will keep mine very brief. My name's Beth Kledfelter. I live at 35 South Shannon. And I would just like to echo Member Fall's comments. I really hope that if this is indeed going to be a model, and I think it's an excellent idea, I really applaud the city administration for this, that we could, we should really try to be ambitious about the sustainability of these. If we, you know, I've been reading that of many parts of the country now, making a whole, especially if you can go a whole neighborhood at a time, making buildings net zero, like so many people in town wanted the school, new school buildings to be, only adds 1% to 3% of the total construction cost because when you spend much more on insulation, you can have a smaller heating system. And, you know, there are savings in related places. I hope that we could come up with some metrics, some real parameters that the developers would have to meet that would at the very least make these homes highly energy efficient. And maybe they could add solar later, but I think that's an important part of affordable housing is not only the cost of acquiring the property, but the cost of living in it and paying, paying the bills, you know, for five years or more. So I was really glad to hear Member Fall raise that issue and I really hope that you'll take that into account.
And some of these issues will come through the PUD process too.
Absolutely.
So it's not like the end of the discussion.
This is not your only bite of the apple.
Yep, yep, great. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. The library land transfer, another exciting topic.
Right, I'm going to give you a document here real quick. This is a draft, this is a work product, so this is by no means, here, I'll give him three, sorry. Here, send this right around. So this is a document that was prepared in conjunction and partnership with Ohio University in negotiations with the Athens County Public Libraries. The land that the public libraries sit on is a parcel that's primarily owned by Ohio University. A portion, it's actually two parcels, three parcels primarily owned by Ohio University. One is the portion south of Putnam Square. The other is the former railroad property that the university acquired in the mid-'80s, mid to late-'80s. Meanwhile, there is a sliver of property shown in blue on the document that I gave you that belongs to the city of Athens. The, and it gets a little complicated here. That parcel that the city owns, that goes through the middle of the library, was acquired in conjunction with a wastewater treatment plant acquisition back in the late '40s or early '50s. So it was originally part of that parcel, but then the railroad split it off. And so it was at some point in history, given its own parcel ID number. Subsequently, in recent years, when the library did their expansion, the city granted the university an easement for library purposes, which the university then allowed the library to bid or build a library on or expansion on it. And so what we're proposing, they, the library has asked Ohio University to transfer the land permanently to the public library system. The university intends to do that. And with a covenant on it, basically that says if it ever were to be used for anything other than a library, that it would revert back to the state of Ohio and to Ohio University. So in conjunction with this transfer, we are proposing that the city would transfer that parcel B or that swath B there with a similar covenant to the library system. And there's a portion of the ORC that's very specific in how municipalities can transfer land to libraries. In all cases, we would retain an easement for any existing utilities. And so there's a couple, there's a couple little circles and notes on here that talk about that in my work product, but this is something that, while it's not absolutely critical, it moves fast. We wanted to get it on so that when council went out of session, that, you know, we at least, I at least had the authority to go ahead and do this if it happens that it were to.
Can you describe what multimodal trail, sort of sell parcels to library with retained land for future multimodal trail?
Uh.
Above A.
Yeah. So C, the 80-foot swath that is noted in, as item C, the green portion in the back, Ohio University would retain that land for potential future multimodal trail.
How do they describe?
Yeah. It could be a, what's that, a tube that goes under the ground that.
Oh, a hyperlink?
Hyperloop. Yes, it could be a hyperloop, absolutely. I mean, you never know. Basically, the university has this long skinny right-of-way, a long skinny property that goes all the way through the city. And who knows in 50 years what the university might use that for and they don't want to just cut that off and transfer off.
Questions?
I'm just curious, what brought it up?
The library board and the library director asked.
Okay.
And I'll tell you what triggered it.
Yeah.
Ohio University can't grant an easement other than for highway purposes permanently. And so they had granted a 25-year easement, that's state law. They had granted a 25-year easement for library purposes that came up again in 2017 and the new director and the library board, what do you mean, that, you know, we have to get another easement from Ohio University? And just because that 25 years came up again, you oftentimes end up voting on every 25 years an easement that Ohio University had granted a long time ago about utility that has to come back through council again. That's what, that's what brought it up. And so the library has started on a process to try to acquire it.
Just to avoid having to keep doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sense of permanency.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and that makes sense, so.
And I think the reversion clauses, you know, would, you know, the one fear that both entities had, both the city and the university had is that, you know, the libraries would sell and then for another use. And we didn't think that was the best thing and so the reversion clauses address that.
Okay, great. Questions?
The little, to be retained by city and university, is that just like that little square there?
Yeah, that's, that's right up against the ODOT US 33 right-of-way. It's that portion that I circled there, it's out. I think it actually sits inside the limited access fence, even though it's part of the parcel that's here. So it doesn't make sense for that to be transferred to the library.
Okay, great. We'll bring that up Monday also.
Great.
Thank you. Fast we're going through this. Hooper Street.
This is a very odd one.
We love odd.
Yeah, so there are, at 40 Hooper, which is the last house on the left-hand side as you're heading towards, the first overpass. Large portions of the front yard of that, of the three parcels that property sits on was acquired by the state of Ohio in 1970 in order to build the highway. And then sometime subsequently, that land transferred from the state of Ohio to the city of Athens. And there's a reversion clause on it that says if it were ever to not be used as public right-of-way, that it would, it would revert to the state of Ohio. But it's not the right-of-way property, it's actually the front yard. So behind what you would traditionally consider the right-of-way of Hooper Street, the front yard of that, of that house, number 40. The property owner has asked to purchase those or to acquire them somehow, but the problem is that the city is under no ability to sell it because it would have to revert to the state and there's no way he would ever buy it from the state. We have no reason to retain it. But, you know, going back to the state doesn't help anyway. And the purpose of him trying to acquire it, because right now his lots are effectively very, very small and if he wants to do any type of addition to his homes, to his home there, it breaks the lot coverage requirements under our zoning code and he doesn't believe that, you know, he could get a variance because the parcels are so small. So the process that we worked through with the attorney that I would ask you to support is that you would grant a special right-of-way permit under Title 49, which is our new right-of-way legislation, used to be called a revocable license. And it would be for use of his front yard as a front yard. I mean, so basically the use of the city property that is his front yard to stay a front yard, state green space, but then so he could count it in his impermeable surface, I'm sorry, his permeable surface portion of his parcel. When he goes to the BZA, he'll have a stronger case to make as to why an expansion won't break his lot coverage.
Right. And we do other right-of-ways for people to build fences and do those sort of things. So it's, it's really not that odd, it's just an odd lot sort of thing. So, I mean, it makes sense and because of the state wanting to probably not really go through the process of selling it.
It's Byzantine when you get into the documents from that 1970 bypass project.
Right, right. So questions? Nope, cool. We'll bring that up Monday too. And last one, the special use permit. This was the, to amend the code, and we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. And so they changed it, they, we asked them to make a change and now that it's been changed, so it's been changed to review, analyze, evaluate and make crossed-out decisions, recommendation to legislative authority with respect to granting or not granting special use permits for major modifications or new wireless telecommunication facilities. So basically, they wanted to, like Title 49, where we worked out the fact that we grant the first right-of-way and then the renewals are done administratively, this is the same process. And that's what we asked them, pretty much. So that's, the planning commission has made a recommendation and has changed things. So.
So if I may, what has been retained is, again, being able to, at the level of the Code Enforcement Office, work through co-locations and minor modifications.
Right.
Which again, as I described to council, the last time this came up, it would basically be for telco X, if they're just replacing antennas on that and, which we see very frequently, that they would be able to, that that could be handled at the code level. Everything else, you know, major modifications, new towers, new whatever, would still go through the planning commission and then go before city council to have the ultimate approval authority on that.
Right. And that makes sense, we do that with other right-of-way issues. You know, we don't have to, you know, if somebody changes their signage, they don't necessarily have to go through council again to get that right-of-way. So this, I like when it's, when things are made fair and consistent across the various codes that we have, which we have a lot of codes. So that will come Monday also with the changes. And that's, questions? That's the end of mine. Thank you. Councilmember Reisner gets finance and personnel. We have council members Butler, Crowell and Kotzis.
Sounds like a law firm. Show me the money. Or a chief law firm. Never saw the three studios. I'm going to thank you, Madam President, Finance and Personnel Committee. We have several boiler points here. I also see the auditors in the audience. First boiler point, appropriations transfers. I received an email from our clerk concerning an appropriation of $33,211 awarded through a state grant to general fund fire to replace funds used to purchase something. Not sure what we purchased. Oh, there it is. A new radio equipment. Okay. Anyone care to speak to that? I assume we'll have legislation for Monday to get this through.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
All right.
We did, we got a grant for that. I think it was a FEMA grant, wasn't it?
It's a.
The fire department?
Yeah, it's a state grant.
State grant, okay.
So I think it might be state DMA.
So yeah, so they got a grant and so we will need to appropriate that money so they can spend it.
Okay.
Except for radios or?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what the appropriation is for that.
All righty.
About all I know.
Any more FEMA grants out there?
Well, I guess I was, I think state.
State grant, yeah.
It's a state.
Sorry.
Okay. All righty. Well, we'll have something ready for Monday, I suppose. Next item, Ohio Municipal League Resolution of Support.
I'm sorry, before you proceed to that next item.
Yes.
One thing that has come up here in like the last week is, there's a fairly significant split, slip on University State Boulevard that has got the water out of this. And it's going to be less than the bidding threshold. So I don't know that we have to authorize independently the expenditure or do anything, but it's going to be more money than the street currently has appropriated in their capital funds that's not already spoken for. So it's about 40, I think it's about $48,000 is what Gregor Hedy is. So it's about $40,000, I think it's about $48,000 is what Gregor Hedy has asked for in order to do a repair of this particular slip. So that's an appropriation, for lack of a better spot, put this on the agenda. I'm asking for appropriation. Doesn't have to be rushed, but it's on the agenda. I need to get on the agenda.
Okay.
Couple other appropriations to go under there. So one is, we got a workers' comp check refund of $113,000. So we've done this several times in the past. And what we want to do is have that money appropriated right-of-way into 101-120. Then when it comes time to pay our bill, we'll divide that money, we'll take that money off what we owe, and then divide the rest of the bill as appropriate for each department, depending on their costs. But that way, it won't just be put in the general fund and be used for anything else. It will go back towards our workers' comp.
Sounds good.
The amount due.
That way we don't lose it.
Yeah, yeah. And the other one is, we have a sewer note due to Hocking Valley Bank in August. And you won't be here in July. However, I need to, and we've talked about this in our auditor meetings, to contact the bank. They don't like to quote interest rates more than about a month out. So I will need to start that process so that we can get that ordinance through in August in time to pay the note. And it's due August 30th. So unless you have a special session, it will need to be suspended on second reading. But we can do it all in August, and that way the timing will be better. And so I can get the quote and then have our bond counsel write up the paperwork and be ready when you come back.
Are we thinking $50,000?
Yeah, we were going to word it up to $50,000.
Up to, okay.
We hope to be able to pay down more. We owe $485,000 on that one. But the sewer fund is really, really, really tight right now. The unappropriate balance in there is only $940. And, you know, this is a...
We can do a lot with that.
$3 million fund. So anyway, you know, that's where we are on that. So the money is appropriated, but the other issue with funds like sewer and water and garbage is that money comes in every week through, you know, service payments. And so we won't have all the money in there to cover that. Because on July 1st, we'll be paying over $600 for OWDA note, or loan for the sewer fund, $613,000. So the fund balance probably won't be built up enough in August to pay any more than that.
Yeah.
And possibly not quite that. So we talked about the wording, if we could say, we've done this in the past for some of these, is to do up to $50,000. Of course, you know, I know we all want to pay down as much as we can when we can. But if the money's not going to be there, then we'll just pay what we can.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do the buy it by Monday, then?
Yep.
Okay, Ohio Municipal League Resolution of Support?
Yes, Councilmember Reisner, this is what I sent to council. When I received it, I believe I received this last week. It came from the Ohio Municipal League. And basically, it's a resolution where council would hopefully strongly urge the Ohio governor and members of Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government funds to pre-recession levels. I'd asked the city auditor, Kathy Heck, to give me some numbers, and she did, and I thank you for that, that shows, because there is an item, there is a line, one of the "whereas" is on here, it speaks to the reduction, these reductions have resulted in the loss of revenue to an amount. And what Auditor Heck has sent me is, again, this is kind of capturing over a period of years from 2006 up to 2018, a net loss at this point. And this isn't even, this is just additive of these. So if you look at, think of things over time as well for revenue that we've lost, this is looking at $448,521 that has been drawn out every year that we've seen decreases. So this is something that the Mayor's Partnership for Progress has been talking about for a long time with our representatives and senators. So I'm urging council to take this resolution up in earnest and have this come forward Monday evening.
Okay. Presbyterian Church parking lot lease. I guess we have to go through that again.
Yep, I can speak to this quickly. The parking lot next to the police station and then the one below that, they are owned by the Presbyterian Church and rented by the City of Athens. Yeah, it's been done so for a number of years. The current rent is $48,473. The church has notified the city through their council that they're interested in renegotiating, or basically renewing the lease, which is up on the 29th of July for another three years. They've proposed a 2.8% increase for each year, for each of the three years. If I do the math, that adds up to just over $154,000 for the three years. Now, I believe I can negotiate a little bit better price than that, to an extent, but, you know, I don't think I can do too much better than that, but I'd like to, I'd like to try when I'm negotiating with their council on this. What this buys us, this up to, so I'm going to ask you basically to authorize me to enter into a lease for up to $154,000 for three years. What this buys us is a place to park the cruiser right next to the, to the, to the police department, and then a number of spaces that we subsequently turn around and rent to the general public. Right now, in any given year, we're bringing in on the revenue side for the spaces we rent in the $33,000 range. And so, you know, we're spending $15,000 a year, basically beyond, you know, what we're bringing in in order to do the lease, and it goes to increase. We believe that we can intensify the way that we're renting that lower lot to where we can get close to breaking even on this by increasing our surface parking for the monthly rental. Right now, they're not quite at market, they're a little bit lower than market rates that are out there. And then also switching some of those spaces to hourly rental. And if we do that, we think we can generate some more revenue. And I may not be able to hit that to make it match what comes in versus what we pay out per year, but I think that, I think I can get a lot closer so that it's a, it's a, it's a, you know, a net zero, hopefully, or close to it. There's not an option to separate the lease and just lease the, lease the, it's a package deal, basically. If you want the spaces next to the police department, you've got to take the whole thing. That's what I'm asking you to do, is authorize me to enter into a renewal for three years up to $154,000 if I can move it to do that and try to negotiate with them.
Okay. Staffing, firefighter captain promotion?
Right. I have one, one item on this. The ORC is very specific in the ways that you do promotions for public safety officers. The, it's very prescriptive, very prescriptive in kind of what you have to do. We have one lieutenant currently on the existing civil service approved list for captain. This is to replace Captain Klinger, he just retired. That lieutenant is Lieutenant Latta. The current non-union pay and benefits ordinance allows for me to extend a 5% increase for an internal promotion. It also allows for it to go up to 10% with city council approval for a, for a non-union promotion, internal promotion. Lieutenant Latta has, will take a pay cut in taking this promotion because he will not have the opportu, you know, his ability to work overtime will be cut fairly significantly. So he recognizes that, you know, he knows he's going to lose some money by taking this promotion, but he still would like to do it. However, he declined the position at the 5%. So what I'm asking you this evening is to allow for it an increase so that his ultimate salary will end up being, hang on a minute. $81,219.84, which is right in between 9 and 10%. The reason it's not to go above that is there is another captain that is on the, the books that you passed legislation from a couple of years ago, or last year, actually, his promotion. And I don't think it's appropriate to go the full 10% and take him above that other captain. So, because that captain, the work as a captain, not much longer. So that's, that's basically what I'm asking. And, I'm sorry, he's a good, he's a good Osiris.
Any questions on that? Well, we have a president, so.
We do, and again, this is going from the, what would be the 5% is $77,418.34 up to, as Service Safety Director mentioned, you know, $81,104.92. So that's the 10%. Yeah, okay.
Long story.
And of course, that's coming out of the general fund.
Yeah.
And, excuse me, my eyes are going out on me. General fund's not very flush at the moment, is it?
No, but I, I mean, I guess I would, I would say that Captain Klinger just retired, and Captain Klinger was making more than, than either of these.
Right, right. So we're actually saving money.
I mean, you have a junior person move up into a position, and the senior person vacated, and the senior person will make even more. There's a little bit of a savings.
I understand. Income tax?
I'm sorry, I...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't see.
No, it's okay, just, this got the, got the wheels rolling. So is there, is there a higher route then to replace or bring anybody into?
Yeah, so what we don't have, so like I said, the ORC is very prescriptive. We don't have anybody left on the current lieutenant's list. So we're going to have to do a testing process to create a lieutenant's list. It's a very prescriptive process that Service Commission has to approve from our existing firefighters. Once we get that, we will, we will hire into that, and you won't have to act on that because all of that is set, easily lieutenant's here, and it's all part of the contract. Then that will create a vacancy for firefighter, and then we'll have to go and hire a firefighter off the street. I do have a valid list for firefighter, but not very much, not very long. Actually, I might not have to go back and look at it, because we may have to go back to remember.
Okay. It's a process.
It is.
It is a long process.
Can't take just anyone.
Yep. Thank goodness.
Okay, income tax?
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
The $81,219.84 is actually slightly, very slightly more than 10%, just so you know. But that's what Matt Hall, the captain who was promoted last year, is making. And so, you know, the Fire Department, Police Department, everybody makes the same, and they just look at salaries different, no matter how long you've been in there. And so the actual 10% I came up with was $81,104. Not a huge difference, but I just wanted you to know that.
So who's right here?
It's up to you to, it's hardly anything more than 10, it's like 10.1% or something.
I can show you the calculations. It's based on...
Well, the law says 10%. It doesn't say 10.1%, it says 10%. So it's got to be 10%. So...
It's based on what the starting, what is included in the starting number that you're applying the percentage to. And there's a, there's a disagreement on a couple of different numbers, which one. I've got like a 10-page email string I can share with you.
I have it, too. I get the numbers, and so I'm just telling you, the 81, I mean, I, he's probably not going to take it if we don't give him what he'll expect, I don't know. You tell me, but it's, it's slightly more than 10% just for the record. Not very much more, I mean, it's not more quibbling on...
No, I mean, he, he'll, I mean, he'll...
Well, not quibbling, I mean, if the law says, if council has the authority to give 10%, then that's, that's what we do.
There should be no more than 10%.
No more than 10%.
I won't ask for one.
Okay. I'll hold you to that. Income tax? Contract to accept credit cards? We were talking about this in the meeting last week?
Yes.
It sounded rather promising.
It's pretty late, I'll just try to go over this very quickly. Yes, we want to start taking credit cards for income tax payments. So Tina has found a company that does government credit card, you know, programs. And so we, we want council's approval to enter into this contract, just so you know what's going on. And anyway, we're pretty happy with them. Lancaster has had them for three years, and they're very happy with them. There's some other towns, you know, on the list that we could go through. But we have a contract now, and it has been vetted by Lisa and me. And any of our questions were answered, and so I think we're pretty happy with it. It won't cost us anything. Any fees will be passed on directly to the user, so we don't have to run them through our system even. And so we'd like to get this started and, you know, as soon as possible, get it up and going, because as you know, people want to pay for things with a credit card. So I can send out the contracts, and you can all look at it and see if you have any questions. Our main questions were on the front page with acronyms that we weren't sure what they meant. GPS is one of them, but that's their government payment system, is the name of the company, you know, I kept thinking GPS and things like that. But it looks like they are very in line with all the security protocols for credit cards that are required in the data collection. There's no cloud or anything, they use a token like we use for our information with Chase Bank. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a little key fob thing that changes the password every 60 seconds. You can sit there and watch it change, and, you know, one person, one key fob, and they can trace the payments to the person who entered them, to the person who paid them. So it's a very secure system for us to do that. And they do do other, they do utilities and other code office, you know, they accept payments for that. And of course, you know, one of our big things about accepting payments and even from the state for tax payments, the Ohio Business Gateway, is we have to have a list of who pays this, the information. We can't just lump it all together and dump it in the bank. We have to be able to credit these accounts. So they seem to have a system already in place, so I'll send this out, if that's okay. But like I said, we would like to get this going, too, and have it in place before fall when the students come back, if possible.
Right.
And so I'll send the contract out. Is there anything else you can think of you want to know about? Or I'll send it out if you have any more questions you could ask or...
Member Costa?
Yes, Auditor Heck, I guess, I guess my question is, so would this, would this then live on the city website, and then people could just key into it and pay with a credit card when they have those quarterly bills?
Yeah, I think they go into their own, I think it's web-based, but they can make payments over the phone with the system, too.
Okay.
So it's a very handy setup that they have. But I could include some of that information with, when I send this out to everybody, about the different types of payments we can take and where it resides and all that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just thinking that this would also have potential for other billings here in the city, or water and so on, that, especially with students who may not want to, let's face it, who writes checks anymore.
We asked about that.
They have different percentages that they charge for different, but they would give us the same percentage, say for utilities billing, which they typically charge a little bit more. I don't know if it's because there's a higher volume, or they have more issues with the payments, or why, but they would give us the same, the same fees for that. And they'll work with us if anybody else does want to be added on. And it would be nice, you know, the utilities billing... wanna be added on, and, um, and it would be nice, you know, the utilities billing, um, I don't believe they take, um, card payments over the phone.
Yeah, you, you.
Yeah, so, um, you know, that's a handy thing, I, I'm sure none of us do this, we pay our taxes and plenty of time, but not everybody does that, and maybe because they can't, and so, it's sometimes it's a last minute, and then if they can't get into our office during our hours or something like that, then they will, um, most likely take advantage of that option.
Right.
So, um, it, it's just, uh, different ways that they can, and, um, you know, that's, so we'd like to offer that, make it easier.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, that's all for this committee.
Thank you all, we're adjourned at 10:51.